Right, good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of Monmasshire County Council on this Thursday, the 23rd of October 2025, taking place in County Hall. And a particular welcome to members of the public who have joined us both in person and online. On paper, it looks like a nice short agenda, and I thank those councillors who have decided to defer motions and questions to a future meeting, since it's likely that a lot of councillors will want to speak on item seven. So let's get on straight away, shall we? Apologies for absence. I've received apologies from councillor Maria Stephens, who, and she's asked me to say that she's in the Royal Gwent today, undergoing vitally important medical investigations. I'm sure I speak for the whole chamber in wishing her the best of luck with these, and would also send our best wishes to most councillors who are online, who wanted to be here in the chamber but are online because of their health conditions. So I'm sure I speak for everybody in giving our best wishes to you as well. Right, are there any other apologies? Councillor John?
No apologies, Chair, but I also think it would be, I absolutely echo the sentiments you just expressed for colleagues, particularly councillor Stephens. I also think it would be appropriate for the council to send our congratulations to our MP Catherine Fuchs, because I understand she's been appointed the Parliamentary Private Secretary to the Prime Minister, quite a significant role, I think, for our MP, and I think as a council, I think we should express our congratulations to her and wish her well in that role.
Certainly. Shall we do that by a claim? Is there anybody who's opposed to doing that? Yeah, I think that happened a little while ago, but it's probably the first opportunity we've had to do that. So yes, let's record that. Yep, I assume there's no votes against. Okay, thank you councillor John. Right, declarations of interest, please. No, right, if there are any as and when, we can do it there. Chair's announcements, you can see online, it's been another busy time with some wonderful events. Right, we'll now move on to questions from the public. We have three questions. The first two of the questions are not here, so I will read each of those in turn and give councillor Griffiths a chance to answer those, but of course there'll be no supplementary on those, so just bear with me. Right, this is a question to full council from the Gateway to Wales Action Group. In the RLDP, partly underpinning the need for more housing in Monmasshire, is the county council's ambition to create 6,240 new jobs by 2033. Information from the Office of National Statistics and NOMIS show that the first seven years, in the first seven years of the RLDP, just 600 jobs were created, or put it another way, the employed workforce increased by just 1.7%. The workforce of the county would need to increase by 5,640 jobs, or 15.4%, by 2033 to achieve this goal. MCC-appointed consultants, Lichfield forecast a loss of 100 jobs in the period 2022 to 2042. Commercial estate agents, Avison Young, forecast a growth rate for top-performing Unitary Authority Cardiff of just 4.1 in the five years to 2029. Does the county council now agree that its job forecast increase is to save the least wildly optimistic? Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks very much, and my thanks to David Cummings for this important question, which I believe goes to the heart of the logic of the plan that we'll be debating later this afternoon. David refers to the Lichfield study, a baseline study of 2022, which has informed the development of the plan in a very fundamental way. Lichfield told us that in Monmasshire, we had an economy that was working beyond full capacity. 99% of our employment spaces were in occupation. Over 97% of our economically active workforce were in work. That's what economists have always called full employment, people just moving between jobs would explain that 3% who were not actively employed at any one time. The Lichfield data confirms what local employers were telling us as we developed the plan. Those local employers want to work in Monmasshire, they want to invest and grow in Monmasshire. It's a good place to do business, they're confident of their ability to innovate and create markets. David was, at one time, secretary of Monmouth Chamber of Commerce, he'll know this well. He'll know firms like Triwall, Silkbuster, Mandarin, Monmouth firms, so successful, so creative and innovative, huge capacity to develop. But what they're saying, all of them, is that they are short of land and they're short of labour, and that's what the RLDP is intended to address. It will make 50 hectares of employment land available in Monmouth and elsewhere in the county. The provision of new affordable housing is crucial, because that will allow a younger population to stay in the county and be available for work. The plan does not, we welcome inward investment, of course we do, and we've had some great firms come into the county, it doesn't rely on inward investment. The growth potential is there within our existing companies, we simply need to create the land and the labour that those existing companies are asking for. David quotes a projection that Lichfield used, but he misses out a key phrase. Lichfield said that if we did nothing, if we provided no land or increased the labour supply, then there would be a loss of jobs in the county. But the conclusion was also that if we made the land available, made the labour available, as the plan will do, then the growth potential is there within the county and can be realised.
We'll move on then to question four B. This actually is from David Cummings, he gets two bites of the cherry, because first time around it was on behalf of the Gateway for Wales group. Right, in the RLDP, the county council have created an extremely ambitious objective of achieving 50% social housing in the housing development sites selected. One of the stated objectives of the county council is to reduce the housing waiting list. In their own report entitled Local Housing Market Assessment Refresh 2022 to 2037, it states that 80% of those on the housing waiting list are single and are seeking single-bedroom accommodation. Surely, a modern housing estate of detached and terraced houses will not suit those on the housing waiting list who are seeking single-bed accommodation. Would not a better solution be to build close, good public transport and jobs, dedicated single-bedroom accommodation in apartment blocks? Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks again, Chair, and thanks, Mr Cummings, who seems, in this case, to be suggesting that we build a tower block of single-person accommodation in Monmouth town centre. I don't know if he's thinking about Vauxhall Fields, I don't know if we should call it Vauxhall Towers, but in the enthusiasm, or in so doing, we might please the residents of Dicton Road, but it would be very poor planning and would certainly displease many others in Monmouth. Our objective is for all the proposed strategic sites to be mixed developments, families alongside single young people, alongside single older people, and I stress that, when we see single people on the waiting list, the assumption is that they are uniformly single young people. One of the fastest-growing demographics around us is single older people, and they are just as like the defined themselves on the waiting list. We want to see market homes alongside low-cost ownership, alongside social rented homes. We don't want, we won't have ghettos of single-purpose housing. We want, all of us want, a rich diversity in our neighbourly relationships. If this plan passes today, we will be looking forward to continuing the creative master planning of the three, four strategic sites, where we will achieve the best quality design and we will build support for the lifestyles that we all want to see. It won't include single-purpose accommodation in the centre of our towns. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Right, our third question then is Mr Richard Liddell. Welcome, Mr Liddell. I'd like to remember to switch your microphone on and ask your question, please.
My name's Richard Liddell, I used to be a senior planning officer for Monmouth District Council many years ago, and I've got an architectural practice in Chepstow at the moment. With regard to the Mounton Road site, policies H1 and H3, this site, in accordance with PPW Edition 12 Para 3.67, which requires local authorities to designate green wedges to prevent the coalescence of settlements and safeguard the views into and out of the area, has been designated as a green wedge for the last 42 years. In the 1983 Gwent Structure Plan, in the 1991 Gwent Structure Plan, has been reinforced as green space in the 2011 LDP, and there are alternative sites for the above proposal that do not impinge on this green space. Given the above, would you not agree that the majority of the residents of Chepstow are not in favour of development on the Mounton Road site, and that, given the recent refusals on the site and alternative suitable and available sites, there is no valid planning policy argument in favour of the proposals to develop a site and destroy the green wedge?
Thank you. Councillor Griffiths?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Mr Liddell. In 2022, the proposal in our preferred strategy was not the Mounton Road site, it was what is referred to as the Bayfield site, on that edge of Chepstow alongside the racecourse. The response to the consultation on that proposal was that the Bayfield site was too far from the amenities of town, it relied on the oversubscribed Dell Primary School, and it impinged on Barnet Wood. So we listened, and we learned, and it was in that context that we have come to propose instead the Mounton Road site, on the condition, and it will be a condition, that there are safe walking routes from that site to Pembroke School, which is in Bulwark, to the amenities of Bulwark, to Chepstow School, and the amenities of Chepstow. It is, I believe, a sound site. Mr Liddell rightly informs us that the site has been part of a green wedge for at least four decades. Should the site, the plan be approved and the site be developed, there will still be a green wedge separating Chepstow from Pulchmerig. It will extend at minimum to over half a kilometre, and in most directions, a lot more. I find it interesting to look at the master planning of the Mounton Road site, which is in the deposit plan. Whilst it will contain 146 homes and space for economic development, the site will be largely undeveloped amenity land, and the undeveloped space identified is that to the west of the site towards Pulchmerig. Land which has up until now been enclosed for grazing will be available as publicly accessible parkland. All of our strategic sites are of this character. Whilst the housing will be urban in character, there is extensive provision for accessible amenity land, providing recreation and the necessary scope for sustainable drainage. On this site, as on others, we will be taking advantage of how our towns in Monmasshire open up to the most wonderful countryside, and we'll take advantage of that. There's a lovely lane from Mounton Road to Mathon, which will go around the edge of this site, it's one of my favourite regular running routes, it takes me through dells, across streams, woodland, craggy hills, all that will be unimpeded by this development. We need to accept that almost every part of our existing urban settlements were at one time outside the settlement boundary. It is in the nature of a revised development plan that settlement boundaries change. Planning applications on this site have been refused because they were outside the settlement boundary. It is now proposed to adjust the boundary, and this is a perfectly normal planning development.
Thank you councillor. Mr Liddell, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, I would, Chair, thank you. Very interesting to listen to your comments in terms of you have listened and learned. I agree with your wonderful countryside comment. You say that there is still a green wedge there. Firstly, the difficulty with that, I feel, is that you cannot see it from either the motorway coming up the Y Valley Link Road or the St Lawrence Road because of the trees that are there, so you get no feeling for the countryside until you come to this site. But more importantly, are you aware that in our representations, we undertook a sample survey of streets in Pentery Park? Of the 35 houses that we contacted, all but two were firm in their objection to development of this site. This was nearly 100% resident objection, from people in an area of Chepstow that does not overlook the site against which the accusation of NIMBY cannot be levied. Given that there were in addition 320 objections in the consultation process, would you not agree that this site should be removed from the RLDP in favour of the Bayfield site because the vast, and I mean vast, majority of the people of Chepstow are not in favour of it?
Thank you, Mr Liddell. Councillor Griffiths?
Thanks again for your supplementary. I think the points you make about the green wedge are interesting, that at the moment, as you approach the site from the motorway along Link Road, what you will see is an array of trees, you won't actually see the grazing land of the green wedge. The development would be secluded in a not dissimilar manner. The purpose of the green wedge, I think is a valid purpose, and one which residents want to adhere to, that there is a clear separation between the settlement of Pulchmerig, which has its own character, and the settlement of Chepstow itself. And so the vista that matters, I suggest, is not the vista you gain from the Link Road, but it's the vista you gain as you drive from Chepstow to Pulchmerig or in the opposite direction. And that vista will be maintained as an open green space, and I think that's the important point there. Your data on surveys of nearby residents, I think our experience throughout the chamber as councillors, and it's something inevitable about it, that if ever any of us survey the 35 nearest properties to a proposed development, we would find 32 or more opponents. That's in the nature of how people react to development, they would prefer that it was elsewhere. And you're suggesting that we move back to the Bayfield site. In the consultation we did in 2022, the reaction, the negative reaction to the Bayfield site was at least as strong as the negative reaction to the Mounton Road site. Chepstow does need a supply of particularly affordable housing, it's the smallest strategic site being proposed. It will meet a housing need in Chepstow. Nothing I've heard has led me to the view that there is a better site than this to provide it.
Thank you councillor, and thank you, Mr Liddell. You are very welcome to join us with the members of the public, or whatever you wish to do for the rest of your afternoon. So thank you very much for coming along and questioning the cabinet member. Thank you. Right, we now move on to item four, which is minutes, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of September. Is it your wish that I move the accuracy of those minutes? Any concerns? Okay, can I take that as accepted? The only movement I can see is relating to the air conditioning, so yes, okay, we'll accept those as an accurate report. Yes, thank you. And then on to item, where am I now? Item six, sorry, the minutes for item five, weren't they? Item six, we have a report from the Governance and Audit Committee, and I think we have the chair, Andrew Blackmore, with us online. Are you with us, Andrew?
I am indeed, and good afternoon to you and one and all.
I'm getting a very bad vote.
Is that better, Chair?
Thank you, Andrew, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so good afternoon, I'll take the report as read, but in terms of the key points, I confirm that the committee has met its terms of reference throughout the year, and continues to provide an appropriate level of both support and constructive challenge to officers on the full range of relevant matters. I would characterise the relationship with officers as being very positive, with mutual respect being shown. However, within the report, I've drawn out two matters are set out in paragraph 4.2, which I view as somewhat disappointing, but you will see how these matters have either been or are being addressed. I am satisfied with how the committee is operating and the levels of support engagement being received from both officers and the full council, and think that's all I want to say, but would be delighted to hear your feedback on the committee's performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any comments or questions? Councillor Brocklesby?
Thank you very much, Andrew. On behalf of the council, I would like to thank you for the sterling work you've put in for yet another year, and the way that you have so constructively engaged with councillors and with officers across the council. I think your report is fair and balanced, and also gives us directions for improvements. And I think we all recognise that there is always room for improvement, no matter how perfect a council might be. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank your fellow lay members for the service they give to local authorities in general, but in particular to Monmasshire County Council, and for councillors to note, that's Suwan Davis, Colin Prosser and Rodri Guest. Thank you again for your service, and for you, Andrew. I look forward to hearing again from you next year, and also noting the improvements that you see. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any more comments or points?
Yeah, I got one there, Chair.
Oh, thank you. I could see, is that, is that like councillor Eason? Oh yes, councillor Eason.
Yes, as I share of the committee and from the members' perspective, I support the Chair's report, particularly the points you made in 4.2, which has been a positive response. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think I can again speak for all the councillors on that committee in echoing what councillor Brocklesby had said, I could see councillor Birch and others nodding. It's a committee which is, oh sorry, councillor Taylor's raised a hand. Okay, I'll take councillor Taylor before I carry on. My apologies councillor.
Thank you. Is there an update on the appointment of the chief internal auditor?
Something like to come back on that?
The easiest way to answer that question is to say that we now have a permanent chief internal auditor.
I think that's the easiest answer we'll get all day. Thank you, Paul. Right, any other points? Right, I think you know what I'm saying, yeah, I think the councillors are very grateful with the way that that committee is conducted. We often have a lot of business to get through, but it's dealt within a very timely and efficient manner. So I'd like to thank you, committee chair, and the other lay members from that committee on behalf of ourselves and the council as a whole. Thank you. Okay, shall we move on then to item seven, which is the deposit local development plan? This is a long and complex document with lots of points. Councillor Griffiths will introduce it in a moment, he'll get the normal 10 minutes. At the end, well, we have breaks every 90 minutes or so, if that's necessary. At the end, I will allow a slightly longer break, we'll probably need it by then, but it would also give councillor Griffiths a chance to categorise what might be a lot of questions into logical groupings. If we're having breaks, I would appeal to you to stick closely to the timing, and perhaps there's a job for the whips there to, well, I almost said literally whip people in, I don't quite mean literally, but you know what I mean, to make sure everybody's back here within the time limit, so we're not held up and members of the public are not kept out waiting unnecessarily. So councillor Griffiths?
Do you like to do something?
Please do.
Chair, it was in 2022 that I brought to the council a preferred strategy for this plan, with the recommendation that we conduct a public consultation. Council supported that recommendation. In '24, I brought to the council a draft deposit plan with a recommendation that we endorse it and conduct a public consultation. The council supported that recommendation. Today, I bring to council the report on that public consultation with the recommendation that we forward that report, the consultation report, along with the deposit plan to Welsh Government for public examination by the Planning and Environment Decision Body, Wales. If you support the recommendation today, I will return in '26 with a plan as amended by the inspectorate for your adoption. It is a long process, in my view, far, far too long. Whilst we are in this chamber to debate different points of view, represent different interests, there is much that we share in common as councillors and politicians. All of us share the challenge of our citizens, who are, I suggest, sceptical of us all, and I do value skeptics. Our citizens make at least two sceptical challenges to us all. One, that we have as politicians no consistent principles, that we blow with the wind, that we seek electoral advantage, that we say one thing and do another. On the other hand, their sceptical challenge is that as politicians we don't listen, we impose our prejudices on a public voice which is not heard. These are important challenges, and I want to consider them in turn, the issue of a lack of consistency. In the three years or so that I've been working on this plan, I believe that there has been a remarkable consistency. It's the consistent goal of increasing the supply of affordable housing. In 2022, we persuaded the then- In 2022, we persuaded the then Welsh Government Minister that we needed to develop 2,000 homes over 15 years in the county. We only persuaded her because we said this would be wholly affordable housing-led planning, with a provision of 50% affordable housing, including 33% social housing for rent. This is a unique proposition by Monmouth. I think it can and will be uniquely achieved in Monmouthshire. The figures were not plucked out of thin air. They derive from our assessment of local housing need, which gives us the data that 50% of our residents and more cannot afford a market home. Think of that. These are people who grow up in our county, they have a family in our county, but they cannot afford a home. They leave, they find jobs elsewhere and they leave behind an increasingly elderly population, schools with declining roles, a need for social care with no care workers, innovative firms who cannot find a workforce, towns that need the buzz of young people if they're going to survive. In the last two years, every promoter of a site in this plan has submitted an assessment of how they will viably achieve 50% affordable housing. And that assessment has been independently attested. Skeptics say to me, and there are a few in this chamber who've said to me, that you cannot take the site promoters at their word, that they will change their minds, that in future they will revise their viability assessments and promote developments which are overwhelmingly market-led. That's been the experience in the past. But past plans are different to this. Past plans have had words like, "We will explore opportunities for affordable housing." This plan has a firm requirement that every site must deliver and we have the viability assessments. If a future developer says no to affordable housing, this plan, unlike any before, will give the council the right to say goodbye, to refuse the planning application. And I want to put this statement firmly on the public record. If there is any developer out there who thinks that they can reverse the viability assessment that they have submitted, they should now sell up and let others provide the housing we need. Because the council's mind will not be changed on this point. Monmouthshire must not be dominated by market housing designed to meet the lifestyle of older retired people bringing equity from our cities. That may bring profit, but it does not meet the need for affordable homes for young people seeking work in a dynamic Monmouthshire economy. We've been consistent on this point of affordable housing. There is the second sceptical voice. It suggests that we are stubbornly cloth-eared, that we don't listen and we've not responded to the voice of the people. It is now much proclaimed that we received 4,000 responses to the consultation, but we have not listened to any of them. That's not true. Every one of the responses has been fully examined, fully reported. We spent the best part of a year detailing what the people have actually said and responses to those contributions. We have not recommended changes because we're told by Welsh Government that our role is to forward the responses so that the inspector can consider changes. I wouldn't have written those rules, but they are there. The view of the Welsh Government, and it has some merit, is that we have had many years to listen and respond as we developed our deposit plan, and we've done this. Consider the differences between this plan and that proposed in 2021. In Abegavenny in 2021, the council proposed land for 887 new homes, including all the sites adjacent to the national park. There was a negative response. We have listened and we've changed. We've converted those proposed sites into green wedges and we focused on the exciting 500 dwelling site alongside the railway station to the east. In 2021, the council proposed three development sites in Monmouth for 749 dwellings. The public response was negative. We've listened and we've changed and we've focused on the one site for 270 homes at Leesbrook. Despite this being much reduced, I recognise that the concerns expressed. They have been fully recorded and the recommendation today is to forward those comments for examination. The site has the potential to be an integral part of Monmouth Town, attractive walking routes to schools, the leisure centre, the library, the town centre, the scrutiny committee, and I thank them for all their contribution throughout this long and complex process. The scrutiny committee has fully examined the ecological impact of this site and received the evidence. The species currently found on the proposed development site will have the habitats to sustain their viability in the surrounding areas. In Chepstow in 2021, and Mr. Little raised the issue of the Chepstow sites. In 2021, the proposal was to allocate 729 homes across three sites. Not 146, 729. Those sites would have stretched continuously from the racecourse to the motorway. We have listened and we have responded. There is one proposed site for 146 homes. On the seventh side, the proposal in 21 was for three sites, including that which closed the gap. And Mr. Little reminded us of the importance of these gaps between settlements. The proposal in 21 was to close the gap between Caldecott and Brogget. We've listened, we've removed that site and development is now focused on the lands of the north of Port Skewett, east of Caldecott. A site which places the wonderful amenity of the castle grounds as an integral part of the developing town centre. In Meir and Andy, in recent decades, there has been substantial development. Some would say overdevelopment over a period of time with too little place making, too little amenity for residents. We've listened. And from the beginning of this process, we've ensured that we propose no further residential development in Meir and Andy.
You've got half a minute, councillor.
Okay. Our residents want us to be consistent, but also responsive. They want us to lead with a vision, and this is a radical plan with a vision. A vision of new affordable homes allowing young people to live in our county, homes which are 100% net zero carbon, homes which can become integral parts of existing settlements, increasing their vitality, sustaining their future. I recommend you forward this plan to the Welsh Government for public examination by the inspectorate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. We will now open it up to questions and discussion. So I'm looking on my screen. Who have we got? Councillor John.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good afternoon, colleagues and to members of the public who are engaging in the meeting. Firstly, can I pass on our thanks to all the officers who've worked on this over many years? The elected members who've engaged in the scrutiny meeting a few weeks ago? But also all those members of the public. Who's that? Oh, David.
Okay, I'll start the clock again, councillor.
Very kind, thank you. We would also like to thank all the members of the public who have engaged in this process, not just at the consultation stage, but who have also come to our meetings and asked questions, gone to public events and have shared their views. The Local Development Plan is arguably the most significant and far-reaching report that a local authority can produce. It sets out the council's guiding vision for land use and development for many years to come. It covers housing, transport, employment, infrastructure, environmental protection, energy generation. It's a legally binding document that drives investment decisions, determining where growth happens and allocates specific sites for housing, employment, retail and infrastructure. It affects every community in our county. It is of such scale, I would suggest it is effectively a vote of confidence in this administration. I can't see how an administration that didn't have an LDP could have the confidence of this council to continue in office. Incredible then that the administration has worked on this document for a series of documents, for nearly four years. They have brought it to this point, to this meeting. And even today is not clear about how this is going to be passed. It has spent, it has cost the council hundreds of thousands of pounds in terms of officer time in bringing the LDP to this stage. And over the last 24 hours, cabinet members have been on the phones trying to persuade, cajole other councillors into letting this pass. How can you be so irresponsible, so reckless to develop a plan and not have any idea if you've got the votes to actually deliver it? It seems incredibly irresponsible to get to this stage. I was disappointed with some of the churlish responses that we've heard from cabinet members, particularly to members of the public earlier. If someone objects to an element of the plan, that they shouldn't get a facetious response saying that they must therefore be in favour of ghettos or that they're in favour of tower blocks on green fields. I was disappointed with those responses and it just reflects an administration that has failed to listen to the views of the public and has stuck to a flawed plan. Now, this was one of the most important consultations that the council has ever undertaken, yet it failed to meet some of the basic standards of accessibility and transparency. Members and residents were expected to engage with 15,000 pages of documentation last month. Some of it added late in the day, some of it corrected after publication and just a couple of days to consider all of that. It was not a meaningful consultation. It was a barrier to public engagement and was completely inaccessible to the public. Now, nearly 1,000 people shared their views on the LDP. Many raised serious concerns about scale, location and viability of proposed developments. Yet the only changes made were factual corrections and grammatical tweaks. No material amendments, no reconsideration of sites, no reflection of the depth of concern that were raised by the public. This is not a democratic process. It is a closed process and it sends a clear message to the public. There is no point engaging and that decision makers have a closed mind. That is simply unacceptable. Now, the RLDP has a 50% affordable housing target. Now, on paper, that might seem ambitious, but unrealistic ambitions carry risk. The viability assessments underpinning this target rely on assumptions about house prices and developer contributions. They do not adequately account for the full cost of infrastructure, energy standards or environmental mitigation. There's widespread concern that developers could return to this council claiming that affordable housing requirements are too onerous and request reductions. So where are the safeguards to ensure that 50% doesn't become 30% further down the road? The plan also fails to address the infrastructure required to support the proposed growth. There'll be more traffic without any progress or promise of infrastructure improvements. Now, we've got specific concerns about traffic congestion at key roundabouts, including High Beach and Park Wall. And I support the campaigns that my colleagues councillor Brown, councillor Edwards and councillor Pavia have been running for many years about improvements at High Beach and the relief road that's required to improve, to reduce congestion in and around Chepstow, which I'm afraid your party has failed to support. We really need to see those urgent improvements, particularly if you are going to plough ahead with this plan. The administration has also had the audacity to say that councillors need to vote for this plan because it'll address surplus places in school clusters in Monmouth and Chepstow, despite the fact that we were told the complete opposite at the full council meeting in July. We were told quite clearly that this makes no significant contribution to addressing surplus places and that we would need other measures which have not been forthcoming. Flooding and drainage are also recurring concerns that I'm sure colleagues will want to touch on later, especially on greenfield sites. Sustainable drainage systems are referenced, but there's widespread doubt about the adequacy, particularly in areas that have already been prone to surface water runoff. The plan does not offer sufficient reassurance about these risks. Environmental protection is another area where we feel the plan falls short. The site in Monmouth has drawn criticism from statutory consultees, including Natural Resources Wales and the Gwent Wildlife Trust. Concerns have been raised about biodiversity, bat habitats and a lack of a green wedge. The visual impact of development on the approach to Monmouth, a gateway to the Wye Valley national landscape, has also been ignored. We have a duty to protect our natural environment in this county. It's one of the reasons why people want to come and live here. The scale and location of development in certain areas is also disproportionate. In the Place Committee meeting, our colleague councillor Dimmock clearly set out how the village of Port Skewett is going to be impacted with a proposed nearly 800 homes in that village. This would fundamentally change the character of the area, merging settlements and eroding the identity of that community. There's no credible transport solution and no guarantee of the promised infrastructure. The local school is already full and instead of expanding capacity with resources available, the council opted to spend that money in a different community. And the addition of one of the largest gypsy traveller sites in the county alongside two other sites within a one-mile radius will also increase demand on local services. Residents are not opposing development for its own sake. They're asking for proportionate, sustainable growth that respects the place that they call home. Employment land is disproportionately concentrated in the south of the county and large-scale industrial development is proposed on the Gwent Levels adjacent to sensitive ecological sites. This risks harming historic landscapes and biodiversity with no clear mitigation. It's also at odds with recent decisions by Welsh Government about development on the Gwent Levels. This is not a plan that reflects the needs of our communities and that's because you haven't listened to them. It's a plan that reflects the pressure of targets from Welsh Government. It lacks the infrastructure, the environmental safeguards and the community support that would make it sustainable and successful. We need a plan that is balanced, deliverable and critically supported by the communities that it will affect. We need a local development plan that is produced with our residents, that reflects their priorities, that is not enforced upon them against their will. This RLDP does not meet that test and we will not be supporting it. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Edwards, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And firstly, can I also thank officers for the work that they've had to carry out as part of this process? Can I also thank all those residents and organisations for the effort they have put in as part of public engagement? The council itself has proudly boasted that there have been over 4,000 submissions from the general public of Monmouthshire and we can all be proud of that, especially as it ran during the build-up to Christmas last year. Chair, I gave what I thought was constructive feedback of this RLDP when it was last discussed at full council a year ago and refreshed my memory of that speech and the excellent contributions of others. Before I took a very deep breath and submerged myself in the documents for this meeting, it is rumoured to be near 17,000 pages worth. Now, this is now the fourth time we have discussed this topic at full council in this term. And quite frankly, after the council boasted back in September that it had received over 4,000 responses and then having listened carefully to what was discussed at Place Scrutiny Committee that same month when the findings of the consultation were presented, I was anticipating a little more fruitful feedback from officers and cabinet in their documentation and the final presentation of the report today. Sadly, when you look at the process as a whole, the only thing you can reasonably conclude is that little has changed. And this has just been confirmed in your introduction today. Individual sites may have changed, but the issues that affect an area remain the same. And worse, have not been properly addressed by this administration throughout this whole process, particularly in Chepstow, which is a constant prime example of ignoring the elephant in the room. Much-needed improvement infrastructure needs to be in place in order to combat your much-flawed development plan. In fact, it has even been referenced by Monmouth residents that the proposed developments in Monmouth without improved infrastructure would make Monmouth the new Chepstow. So this leaves me in a dilemma. You would like us to approve this to... You would like us to approve this deposit plan today so that it can then be submitted to Welsh Government for review, but without reassuring both myself or my residents that it would result in a much needed improved infrastructure for Chepstow, this has always been the piece of the jigsaw that is missing. Fortunately, many of us councillors will have the opportunity to speak again today and hopefully, like myself, will speak on behalf of residents and their concerns, not our own. Now, there are many legitimate issues that can be raised across the county, however, I will continue to speak on behalf of Chepstow residents on this occasion. For me and my residents and those who have any experience of the Chepstow area, it is mainly one of poor infrastructure. Yes, we all recognise that housing is needed in Monmouthshire, but like I have said time and time again, with this recognised need should also come responsibility. The real issue here is that Chepstow simply cannot cope with any more housing developments until something constructive has been achieved with its infrastructure problems. A 146 home residential area, a hotel, residential care home and neighbourhood hub directly next to High Beach Roundabout isn't the way forward without dealing with these issues first. The strain on Chepstow is immense on its local services, its schools, where this administration is already a year behind in proposing a plan for the Chepstow cluster, its GP surgeries and its community hospital with basic services that should be expanded on. GP surgeries are unable to keep up with demand as it is and there's a waiting list for an NHS dentist as long as any traffic jam at rush hour in Chepstow. As I have previously said, pushing through a plan while ignoring justifiable concerns about developing the infrastructure beforehand, or even at the same time as any potential housing development, is total madness. Setable planning for infrastructure must be part of this process and the administration shouldn't be let off the hook by repeating those words, "we're in discussion with Welsh Government". How many times has colleagues, have colleagues and I questioned High Beach, High Beach progress in the last year alone and still with no credible response? Prior to this, it took you over a year to admit that Welsh Government wasn't going to even act upon the previous studies. Traffic congestion is not considered a priority by this administration, as you have seemed to have kicked the discussion of a bypass into the long grass, even though Labour are in power at both ends of the M4 and done nothing to address the pollution issues on Hardwick Hill, which no doubt will be made much worse following the understandable temporary closure of the old Wye Bridge for possibly 18 months. The issue is that problems continue to surface and solutions are not explored and acted upon in a constructive way. I don't think many in this chamber outside of the administration are convinced that this plan is going to achieve its four key objectives as already covered. Looking at the write up of the consultation report and the responses you've given in relation to issues raised in many of the RLDP policy areas such as infrastructure and employment in the economy, you've used words like credible assumptions being made and that your RLDP recognises the need to ensure that appropriate infrastructure is already in place and it follows national policy aspirations. These woolly responses simply don't stand up as credible answers and genuine concerns have either been passed over or poorly addressed at best. It appears at times that this whole process has been a tick box exercise to get development plan in place and that it's acceptable to deal with any issues later and that's only if Welsh Government back it up with funding to deal with the issues. Now, one major event has happened since we last spoke on this topic and your actions have disturbed me even further, that is the act of public engagement. I mentioned earlier the council was most proud of the impressive feedback from residents. In fact, the reason this deposit plan stage was delayed is down to the high level of feedback. Engagement, surveys, feedback are important and key to what we do as councillors. When I was elected this term, I carried out a full resident survey to give my residents an opportunity to let me know what I should focus on as a councillor, hence the reason why I've spoken on many topics from road safety, education, the RLDP, healthcare and even quality. The council conducts its own various public engagement exercises as part of its remit. In this term alone, it's been engaging on local flood risk management, libraries, playgrounds, active travel routes, community safety, the home to school transport policy, place making plans and of course, the annual budget consultation and the council's generic "let's talk" Monmouthshire resident survey. Now, when it comes to public engagement on the RLDP and its 4,000 responses, quite possibly a record for Monmouthshire, firstly, there has not been one single, single significant amendment to this development plan. Monmouthshire is abundant with professionals, surely some of the 4,000 added something worthy.
Thank you councillor, councillor Bromfield.
Oh, you haven't finished yet, sorry. Just taking a pause of water and try through. And secondly, residents have been given generic copy and paste responses occasionally not based on reality, for instance, 50%, affordable housing requirements and followed by no change required to their feedback. The council's comment in relation to the plan failing to mention how development in border areas will impact on our area and plan is simply given as cross boundary issues including transport and air quality are fully considered and addressed. This comment is priceless and demonstrates that no thought is given to the reality of the situation in Chepstow and surrounding area or the wellbeing of residents. That to me is disrespectful to engagement and a dereliction of duty to consultations and public engagement seriously and taking public engagement seriously. Just to close Chair, the reason why I cannot support this plan today is the same reason why I haven't supported each stage to date. The issues of improved infrastructure have still not been addressed adequately and given the council's par performance on this, sadly down to Welsh Government's lack of infrastructure after construction of the Fairfield Mayby site in Chepstow, it's unlikely to be addressed once development has occurred in this instance. This will only add to the congestion and pollution problems Chepstow faces. There seems to be some hopeful assumption the Welsh Government will carry out improvements after this further review of High Beach. I have no faith and that's based on past experience. I do have one further question though, which I hope will be taken constructively by this Labour Green administration. How can you reassure residents that their views will be digested, reviewed and fully taken on board by this council in any future consultations when such disrespect has been given to the 4,000 this time around? This is food for thought as it must now be resident apathy to consultations. You must do better to gain the trust and respect of residents who not only pay our wages but also contribute so greatly to our communities. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor, apologies for interrupting you. Councillor Bromfield please.
Thank you Chair and I'd also like to thank all the officers involved in, in producing this plan. But that being said, I want to raise serious concerns about policy CC3, which is renewable energy generation within this local development plan. On paper, CC3 looks balanced, but when you read the wording closely, it is in fact a permissive policy that opens Monmouthshire's countryside to speculative solar or renewable developments. The policy states that proposals for renewable energy will be permitted where certain criteria are met. Those criteria include, among others, A, following a sequential approach to site selection, favouring previously developed or lower quality land, C, ensuring there are no unacceptable adverse cumulative impacts and E, avoiding the permanent loss of best most versatile agricultural land unless there are overriding benefits. To me, that final clause is the problem. By adding the words unless there are overriding benefits, what looks like a safeguard becomes an open door. Every developer can claim that climate benefits outweigh agricultural loss and in practice that means BMV farmland is still at risk. Monmouthshire has one of the highest proportions of best most versatile land in Wales, yet this policy, policy offers no firm presumption against development on it. There are no map search areas, no thresholds for cumulative impact and requirement to demonstrate local energy need or community benefit. So while CC3 may tick the procedural boxes, it fails to give planners or residents real protection. It leaves decisions to be made case by case, so reactive rather than strategic, which is exactly how we end up with piecemeal solar industrialisation of our rural landscapes. This is not about me rejecting renewables, it is about demanding clarity and control. We should be prioritising rooftop and brownfield sites for solar, community owned schemes and farm diversification that supports agriculture, not displaces it. Until policy CC3 includes a clear spatial preference for non agricultural land and removes that overriding benefits loophole, I cannot support this RLDP. Climate action and food security are not competing goals, they're two sides of the same responsibility. If we are serious about sustainability, we must start by protecting the land that sustains us. Thanks.
Thank you councillor, councillor Chadwell please.
Yeah, thank you Chair and thank you members. As Cabinet Member for Social Care, I want to speak today not just from a policy perspective but also from a deeply personal one. Over the past decade, Monmouthshire's population has grown by just 1.8%, but beneath that modest figure lies a stark demographic shift. Our over 65 population has increased by 24%, while the number of working age residents has fallen by 3% and our school population has dropped by 7%. Let me be clear though, older people are not the problem, they're the backbone of our communities, carers, volunteers, mentors and friends. But the imbalance in our population is becoming unsustainable. We are losing our young people, not because they don't love this county, but because they can't afford to stay. Residents tell me time and time again that their children have had to move away and I feel that personally. My own children are unlikely to return here to raise their families after university and that breaks my heart. But it's not just about families, it's about the people we rely on. Care workers, teaching assistants, young professionals who simply can't afford to live in the communities that they serve. This makes it harder to recruit the staff we need to deliver the social care and the public services that our residents depend on. If we don't act now to address this demographic time bomb, we risk condemning more and more of our older residents to grow old without family nearby and without proper, without the support networks that make ageing with dignity possible. And that's why I support this replacement local development plan. Its commitment to 50% affordable housing is not just a number, it's a lifeline. To vote against this plan is, in my view, to turn our backs on the future of this county. As a member of the Green Party though, I also want to speak on the environmental aspects of this plan. Over the past three years, I've worked with colleagues to ensure that this plan doesn't just acknowledge the climate and nature emergency, but it responds to it. All new housing will be net zero carbon, going beyond current building regulations and setting a standard that Wales can be proud of. The main strategic sites are located within walking distance of town centres and local facilities, encouraging active travel and reducing car dependency. We've also taken steps to build resilience to climate change. So for example, no development will be allowed that increases flood risk. Sustainable drainage systems will ensure that developed land holds as much as if not more water as it did before. And I've listened carefully to concerns about biodiversity and the impact on nature and these are valid concerns and they've shaped the plan we have before us today. Welsh Water, De Cymru, has confirmed that there is sufficient water supply and treatment capacity for the proposed developments. So in Monmouth, for example, phosphate stripping is already in place, but we're also requiring nutrient neutrality in our plans as a precaution. The preferred sites were assessed through a process led by the Design Commission for Wales, ensuring that green infrastructure, ecology and visual impact were considered alongside social needs. Let me address one specific concern that has been raised and that's the Leesbrook site in Monmouth known as HA4. Residents have rightly asked about the impact on our population of greater and lesser horseshoe bats. So a detailed study was undertaken and it included radio tracking data showing that while bats forage in the area, they don't nest on the Leesbrook site. The Leesbrook site also just represents just 0.39% of the 36 acres, 36 hectares of pasture, hedgerows and woodlands that form their foraging zone. So taking that into account and with the environmental policies proposed in the plan like LC5 to minimise light pollution and GI2 to protect trees and hedgerows and S8 to require a net benefit to biodiversity and ecosystem resilience, the expert conclusion from this study is clear, the conservation status of our local bat populations is unlikely to be adversely affected by these proposals. This plan doesn't pretend that development has no impact, but it does ensure that development is done responsibly with nature, climate and community at its heart. So in conclusion, this RLDP may not be perfect because no plan ever is, but it is a bold, balanced and necessary step forward. It addresses the housing crisis, it supports our ageing population and it takes meaningful action on the climate and nature emergency. It offers hope for our children, for our elderly and for the generations yet to come. So I urge all councillors to support this plan today. Let's show that we're listening, that we care and that we're ready to build a future that works for everyone in Monmouthshire. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Dimmock please.
Can you hear me Chair? Hello?
Yeah, you're slightly faint, but I think we can hear you okay. Yeah, agreed? Yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead councillor.
Thank you Chair and thank you to members of the public that spoke earlier today. Very grateful for this opportunity to speak. Is with deep regret that many of us feel compelled to oppose the RLDP plan, not just certain allocations, but the plan in its entirety. The process that has brought us here has left residents disillusioned and unheard. I raise my frustration into the process at the place scrutiny committee last month and I struggle to understand how any Caldicott councillors can support this plan. This will, you will ultimately be answerable to your residents who will also feel the impact of the development's sheer scale. I'd like to thank residents who have despite spent countless hours engaging through consultations, attending drop in sessions and submitting evidence based objections. This council's so-called meaningful engagement has amounted to little more than a tick box exercise. Our concerns have been noted but not acted upon. I disagree with your earlier comments councillor Griffiths, we are the elected representatives of Monmouthshire residents and you should listen to those people and you've chose to ignore them. The council's repeated disregard for the electorate's feedback shows a complete disconnect from the very people it claims to represent. As a councillor, I find myself questioning whether our roles can truly bring meaningful change within this council. I would like to apologise to residents in the north of the county. Whilst I have worked across Monmouthshire during my time as a councillor, my knowledge and experience are best placed to comment on the proposed sites concentrated around my own ward, Caldicott and Chepstow. These proposals will irreversibly change our area, they will overwhelm already fragile infrastructure, erode local identity and damage the character of some of the South Monmouthshire's most valued communities. When decisions of this scale are pursued in defiance of the people they claim to serve, it is not a plan for the people, it's a plan being done to the people and that is how residents of Port Skewett are feeling right now. This is not just about lines on a map, it's about the very fabric and identity of our communities. The RLDP identifies a single site in Port Skewett and let me repeat that again, it is in Port Skewett, not Caldicott. For 770 dwellings, the largest housing allocation in the entire county, this represents more than a third of all new homes planned across Monmouthshire by 2033. This is not proportionate in size, infrastructure or sustainability of Port Skewett. Our village has always had a distinct rural identity, now at risk of being swallowed up by the urban sprawl emerged with Caldicott. During consultations, I warn that the proposal erases the distinct identities of Port Skewett and Caldicott. It is not proportionate to the area, the area's character or infrastructure capacity. The plan may call this development Caldicott East, east of Caldicott, oh and a little token gesture of north of Caldicott at the last minute, but it sits firmly within Port Skewett. Our infrastructure cannot sustain this level of growth. The B4245 has bottlenecked The B4245 has bottlenecks at both ends with Chappstone and Mego. It is congested every rush hour, riddled with potholes and repeatedly flagged as a safety concern. Adding more than 1,500 vehicles from a 770-house new development is not responsible planning. It is a recipe for gridlock and accidents. Public transport is equally poor. Port Squire has no train station. Mego has no train station. Caldicott Train Station, our nearest station, is isolated, and many passengers do feel unsafe. When I raised this last year, residents overwhelmingly supported my comments online. The lack of lighting, infrequent change, the sense of vulnerability to turn people, especially women, young people and older residents from using public transport. Bus services from Crick are also limited. The RLDP offers no concrete proposals to improve this. To describe this as a sustainably located, well-connected site is massively misleading. Without guaranteed front-loaded investment in transport and infrastructure, the claim simply does not hold up. Even if desirable, the plan's deliverability is uncertain. The council's own document delays completions due to site complexity. There is no detailed infrastructure plan, confirmed delivery partner or guaranteed funding. The aspirations to deliver 50% affordable housing, 660 homes for social rent is admirable but unrealistic without major public subsidy. The Welsh Government, developers and even the council's own evidence base has raised concerns about the financial viability. Without secured funding and enforceable delivery mechanisms, these numbers are aspirational and not guaranteed. Across the country, we've seen affordable housing quietly reduced and dropped when viability arguments arise and planners allow this number to whittle down on every development. Concentrating so much growth in Severn Side and around Chappstone also fails the test of spatial equity, leaving other areas of Monmouthshire underserved. We often hear arguments that we need growth to attract younger people and balance our ageing population. That is a very valid goal, but as a member of the ward that already has considerable development, it will only attract buyers from further afield. It would increase commuting, add congestion, not local opportunity. Our public services are already under severe pressure. Residents struggle to secure GP and dental appointments. I've already told you before, I have residents taking young children to Newport for basic dental treatment. Adding 1,000 more residents without new medical infrastructure is unsustainable, and it's going to hit the existing residents. And I think we've got to start remembering there are people living here that this is going to impact. The plan mentions a possible mixed-use neighbourhood centre. I fully welcome that, with a house facility. But this is non-committal and undefended. There is no binding obligation that it will ever be delivered. Education provision is equally concerning. One new primary school will not meet the demand in our secondary schools, nor does the plan address early years provision. And I won't even get started on early years provision and what's been taken away from ARW in the past. We cannot continue to add housing without ensuring the essential public services are ready to support them. The proposal targets greenfield land again, taken away from prime agricultural land, directly contradicting the council's own climate and biodiversity commitments. Residents have raised repeated concerns about flooding. Caldicott already experiences overwhelmed drainage systems and water surface problems. Paving over natural floodplains with housing will only worsen that. The plan may claim compliance with flood guidance. I know officers have constantly said to me, you know, it will be taken care of in the SEDs, but paper compliance does not remove real world danger. Existing drainage is aging. The climate change will make rainfall events more severe. This development will fundamentally change Port Squire's character forever. This cabinet's attempt to ignore the true name and village identity of the area shows a disregard for the community effects. I suppose I should be grateful, though, that you are now referring to it as Caldicott East, Port Squire North. Our village is valued for its distinct identity, human in scale, green and cohesive. The RLDP's own vision speaks of retaining distinctive character and vibrant cohesive communities, yet the proposal undermines both. The supposed integration with Caldicott is in reality an absorption. One community disappearing into another. The very qualities that make Port Squire special will be permanently lost. Port Squire Community Council have worked to produce a place plan, and we have been asking the local authority to support and adopt. The response is no other town council or community council have delivered a place plan, and we should seek advice from Planning A Wales, who tell the community council it's time for the local authority to adopt. The place plans were introduced by Welsh Government to allow communities to engage constructively and creatively with planning, yet the council refuses to recognise the place plan. Why? Once again, it appears that this council overlooks Port Squire every opportunity. The RLDP proposes a Gypsy and Traveller site south of Bradbury Farm.
Half a minute, councillor, half a minute.
Squire Port. Residents have raised genuine concern about the highway safety, particularly the A48 junction and its unsuitability for touring caravans. And I have, I'll stop there on the Gypsy and Traveller site. What we're calling for is a balanced approach. We all agree Monmouthshire needs affordable housing. No one opposes houses in principle, but what we oppose is the lack of originality, ignoring infrastructure limits, dismiss environmental realities and the silence of community voices. Good planning is about balance. Meeting housing need while protecting identity, manage environmental impact and ensuring the infrastructure comes first. Smaller, well-designed developments across multiple settlements, reuse of brang field sites. They are there. They are only, what, 10 minutes away?
It's time, councillor, it's time.
I urge members to not support this. It's disproportionate in scale, unsupported by infrastructure and detrimental to the area.
Councillor, you're well over your time. Can you just finish one short sentence, please?
Well, how do you do it? You know, you're... To defend the plan in its current form and is to ignore the evidence in the community and impact the long-term wellbeing of this county, and I think it's absolutely shameful. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Chair, and you'll be pleased to hear that I'm going to be brief. Because what I want to talk about is not actually in my ward, but it's so, so close to it. And we are talking about the same issues that councillor Dimmock has just very adequately put over. So I'm going to underline and supplement some of the points that have already been made. There's a lot to like in this RLDP. There's a site in my ward that I'm quite happy with. But I've consistently been concerned about aspects of it. The 50% blanket affordable housing policy, whereas absolutely laudable, is, in my opinion, unrealistic. Councillor Dimmock has given the reasons for that, and I support what she said. It will lead to lower receipts for any land that we wish to dispose of as a county. And I think we've already forgotten what Section 106 contributions are. And I think we can get used to the idea of not getting much of that. Because the cost to developers of providing the level of affordable housing, when you consider everything else which has got to be there, net zero, sprinklers, you name it, it's all got to be built in there. They're just not going to be able to afford to do it. If the current application for a Gypsy and Traveller site is successful, it will mean that with the addition of the one which is in the RDLP, there will be four sites within a radius of a quarter of a mile. That is far too many, not only for the residents of the area, but I would suggest far too many for the traveller community, too. They don't like being too close to developments. And talking of developments, within a stone's throw of the Bradbury Farm one is the site that councillor Dimmock has just been talking about. I would suggest that if the both are to be there, that the size of the development north of Port Squire, I won't call it, east of Caldicott, is too much, and we should be, we should be cutting it back. Far too close for the two to be harmonious. And it's going to lead to unrest. I know it is, because I know the problems associated with the Travellers Rest Site in Crick, which is one of the four that I spoke about. So, Mr. Chairman, I can't support this plan as it is. Those two particular items worry me substantially. The proximity of the Gypsy Traveller sites and the huge development north of Port Squire will impact far too much on residents in my ward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Penny Jones, you seem to have moved down the pecking order. Do you want to come in later or now?
Chair, I'd like to come in now, please. Sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I'd like to say that I acknowledge and appreciate all the blood, sweat and tears that has gone into producing this RDLP by the officers. So thank you. But at this stage, I realise that as a ward member for Raglan Ward, I have three categories to consider. Housing, land set aside for employment, the placement and necessity for which is debatable in the ward, and a renewable energy site. The situation is such that nothing can be changed at this stage, and each site will have to be considered in more depth when planning applications are submitted. However, one application cannot go forward without comment. The site submitted by MCC for a renewable energy site. At Place Scrutiny recently, Mr. Will Morgan, who is planning to continue the tenancy of the farm that his grandfather first rented in the 1950s, spoke eloquently about his fight to ensure his dairy farm remains sustainable at a time when farming and the rural economy are under the cosh. MCC, the landowners, submitted the 40-plus acres, approximate, site for a renewable energy site, despite the fact that this is one of the few successful dairy farms left in Monmouthshire. The size of the farm is approximately 140 acres, supporting 180 cows and followers. Thus, one-third of the farm is being removed for solar panels and land suitable for employment. The site is set on grassland, which would make it necessary for the herd, any herd left, to cross the Raglan-Landeni Road at least twice a day to access fields on the other side of the road. This is particularly dangerous in the winter months, following twice-daily milking. We are told that the renewable energy produced will support the electric vehicles at the nearby council depot. The reasoning for doing this is quite unbelievable. Sacrificing a working farm for a solar panel site, when at least one other site in the Raglan area has been offered as a candidate site by a farmer. This is a rural county. Where are our priorities? Lastly, I would just like to add that despite being reassured that there would be a follow-up after the Place Scrutiny meeting, neither the family nor myself have received any communication at all until supposedly this Monday, although I have spoken to Mr. Morgan since then, and he said that he had had no communication at all. And I find this quite reprehensible. Surely Mr. Morgan deserved acknowledgement following his emotive presentation at the meeting. And as I'm in touch with him, he assured me that he would have liked to have further discussions. My residents and others are sceptical about whether anyone has listened to their feedback following the consultation period in November, December last year and since, that this plan was and is set in stone. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Birch.
Thank you, Chair. There are currently 3,759 households on the housing register in Monmouthshire, rising by 9% last year, and around 200 homeless households, mostly in temporary accommodation. That's people to whom we owe a legal homelessness duty. And as we've heard, many of those are single people because it's almost impossible to rent or to buy in Monmouthshire on one wage. There are people of all ages and all circumstances in housing need. They include nurses, mechanics, drivers, teaching assistants, retail workers and our own staff, who serve the public in difficult circumstances and in all weathers. They range from care leavers to people who need accessible homes in old age. But as Cabinet Member for Housing, the ones I worry about in the early hours of the morning are the families with children in overcrowded, expensive private lets or waiting a year in temporary accommodation, because we just don't have enough homes. Now, I've heard it said that before building on greenfields, we should tackle empty homes. We're doing it. The number of empty homes is reducing year on year, and we've brought some of them back into the affordable housing stock. Only this week, we were talking about what we need to do next. They say we should tackle empty plots in towns and flats above shops. We're doing it. Housing associations and local developers are now bringing a steady stream of projects through, many in partnership with this council. But we won't come anywhere near meeting the need unless we allocate land for new housing, both for purchase and for rent. I think the public do understand that we have a housing crisis here in Monmouthshire. In Monmouth in particular, the churches have been tireless in advocating for affordable homes so that people can stay in Monmouth where their roots and family support are. The vote today is the culmination of years of work. Our planning team have evaluated every site promoted by developers in depth and at length, and the plan which has been consulted on represents our best judgement collectively after listening to communities. If we vote today to send it to the inspectorate, then every site and every objection will be tested objectively. Concerns have been raised about infrastructure, about traffic, about flooding, about connectivity, and all of those are valid, but they have been addressed in the plan. But the detail will be for the future judgement of the Planning Committee. Now, I know that our, members of our Planning Committee only want to give approval to the best schemes, to really quality development. But, and by approving the plan today, we give our planners and our Planning Committee colleagues the policy tools that they need to ensure that all future development is of the highest standard. Because currently, they're working with policies that are a decade old. Now, it's easy, and it's often popular, to oppose change. We've all been bombarded with emails from opponents of particular developments making entirely valid points, but change doesn't stop. We just risk losing the power to shape it. If we fail to pass this plan today, it will not prevent development, but we will abrogate the responsibility given to us to ensure that it is the right development. Zero carbon, walkable homes and with cycle routes, walkable communities in locations that work for our towns and villages, a mix of housing that meets community need. We will break faith with our housing partners, and instead, we will get what the volume house builders choose to build to maximise their profit. We will leave it to a future council to start the LDP process again at great expense, with huge waste, and to bring a plan back in four or five years' time. Will the facts have changed? Will the land be different? Will development be more popular? I don't think so. But we will have lost our chance to provide those thousand affordable homes, those quality jobs. By the time a future council considers a new plan, we will all be five years older, and so will those children. Now, I know that we all care passionately about our places, of my place is Abigavenny. And one of the things that I've learnt to love about our town is that everyone has an opinion. But for once, there is general agreement among the town council, the civic society and just about everyone I've spoken to, that to develop on the east of the A465 and the railway and to protect the Sugarloaf slopes is the right choice. The challenges are obvious, but I'm convinced, and I believe the inspector will be too, that they can be overcome. I look forward to a leafy development there of net zero homes with gardens and allotments below this gyridarch, a short walk to town and where buses stop at the station. The best place to live in what will still be the happiest town in Wales. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Butler, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to start by thanking officers for all the hard work they've done in preparing this plan. I represent the residents of Goitra Vare, and I'd like to talk about the proposed development. to talk about the proposed development, known as HA12, which is on the edge of Penplany Village. Now, in our community, there's a shortage of two- and three-bedroom homes, and I suspect this is true of much of the, much of Monmouthshire. These are the homes suitable for young people starting out and for older people wishing to downsize. So, in principle, I welcome this relatively small development of potentially 42 houses. But my concerns relate largely, but not wholly, to the access to this site. In the submitted outline plan, access is suggested off the existing Tremoras Gold Road. And questions have been raised by residents of that road regarding the right of access of the developer. In short, they don't believe that this right of access exists, as they pay a management fee to maintain this piece of land where it's proposed. Not surprisingly, the consultation resulted in 22 responses from residents, only of two of which were positive. So, will this new development be accessed from the existing development, or, as has now been put forward, a new access be sought directly off the busy A4042? I'm very concerned to learn that direct access from this 42, the A4042 is being considered. When the acres development was built, an access from the A-road was refused in favour of maintaining a smooth flow of traffic on this very busy A-road. The stretch is managed by Sutra and has a double blind bend immediately prior to the site if approached from the south and at a speed limit of 50 miles an hour. It's development of 42 houses, of which 50 are intended to be affordable, and most of those for social rent, will attract young families with children. Therefore, the suggestion of immediate access to the trunk road does not sit well with me. If the plan passes, I'd like to see a transport assessment of this as soon as possible. As it's a relatively small development of only 42 houses, I also have grave reservation as to whether 50% affordable housing is actually achievable. I question how viable it will be for the developer. Sorry, something came across my screen and I've lost my place. And the likely impact on net-zero ambitions. I also question the desirability of those houses that will go onto the open market. I have been told by several potential purchasers who want to see this development that they would find such a high percentage of affordable and social rent homes to be off-putting. You cannot realistically pepper-pot social housing on such a small scale, where 21 out of 42 houses will be affordable. And I don't believe this approach would be good for the social cohesion of the village of Penplany. A percentage of 25 to 30% would be much more realistic. As it stands, I don't believe this development is right for my village, but I also recognise that without a development plan, I fear that unregulated development might follow. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We've just gone past the 90 minutes. Councillor Riley, would you like to speak now, or do you want to leave it until after? We've had a 10-minute break.
I'll do whatever is...
I'm giving you the power, Councillor Riley, to decide.
I like power. Thank you, Chair. I will be brief.
Okay, yeah, all right. So, we'll break after Councillor Riley.
...for a toilet break. I'm really sorry. Okay, that's, that's decision done then. After the break.
Okay, right. We'll break. We'll break for 10 minutes, then. It looks like it's, there's a clock up there. I'm trying to get my time here. It's now 3.34. So, 10 minutes. Whips, Right, I think, yes, it's Councillor Riley, if you're ready, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be as brief as I can. And I don't want, the last thing we need today is repetition, so I'm trying to not repeat some of the points made by Councillor Chandler earlier. So, I just wanted to say that today's the time that we need to look to our conscience. We were elected to represent the needs or wants of our residents, and I'm sure most, if not all of us, have had direct representations made from Monmouthshire residents who are unhappy with some aspect of this RLDP, and it's a difficult position to be in. Overall, however, the geography and demography of the county feels as though without this plan, we're in self-destruct. By 2030, it's estimated that 25% of Monmouthshire's population will be 65 or over. Our homes are expensive, and so we cannot attract younger residents as things stand. In my ward, I'm often contacted by hard-working people living in private rentals. House price inflation affects renters too. Even the smallest rent increase can see them tipped into food and heating poverty. We have nothing at present to offer these people. Young families are often separated from the grandparents who would have supported them in working and childcare, as they have no choice but to move to other local authority areas that are cheaper. As people get older in Monmouthshire, often they are wealthy in assets but cash poor. Their needs increase, however. They are less likely to be paying full council tax, either through theirs or a loved one's ill health or worse, that they are now a sole adult living in an often large property with nowhere to downsize to. These increasing needs, as we get older, see as needing more and more caring and domestic services, but recruitment difficulties are exacerbated in rural counties. Travel under cars are expensive. Why travel further from cheaper local authority areas when you can work locally? It seems obvious, but the services Monmouthshire residents need more and more often are from low-paid workers who can't afford to live locally and need not travel to work. This means that less people are able to stay in their homes and will need to either have living care at approximately £2,000 a week, or care homes at nearly £6,000 a month. These still require those care... This means that less people are able to stay in their homes and will need to either have living care at approximately £2,000 a week or care homes at nearly £6,000 a month. These still require those carers to be recruited in Mumbashia though. Capacity to access services either through private or through statutory services will be improved through the adoption of this carefully thought out plan. I'm sincerely grateful for the time, effort and painstaking detail from councillor Griffiths and the officers. We cannot afford to miss this opportunity and I feel many people in this meeting today know this to be the case. Please, now is the time to be brave and do the right thing. The current situation isn't sustainable. New affordable, well-designed housing will support our residents by providing opportunity for a new population or holding on to and supporting the existing ones. This includes the sustainability of our schools, some of which currently have unfillable vacancies. I propose that we should vote for this plan to be forwarded as it is in the best interest of Mumbashia residents across the whole county. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Eason.
Thank you Chair and I'll be very brief brief because I believe most of the things I want to say have been said by other councillors. It's important this RLDP moves forward. If we don't move it forward, we're going back 15 years as far as I'm concerned. I remember the LDP in 2011, 2012, 2011 to 21. The aspirations we wanted for this, I'd talk about the south of the county, I won't talk about Lambeth any more, I know they've got concerns, but the aspirations we wanted for the south of the county like the B4245 and the infrastructure problems with doctor surgeries and the High Beach Roundabout, they haven't been addressed. But we don't just give in because they haven't been addressed, I think we ought to move forward to keep pressing for them. We've also got to press in the south of the county on the back of this going to, what I would suggest goes to Pedo, that we've got to look at what we really get in the south and the south-east of the county. As councillor Edwards said, by the time you get through the High Beach Roundabout on traffic jams, it's 40 miles to a hospital in Nistford Munner. It's 30 plus miles to a hospital in Lambeth any. 20 plus to the Grange you can't get on public transport. The Royal Gwent, it's chaos if you want to go and park there, as I well know. We've got an hospital in Chepstow which we should be pressing and pressing and pressing to get redeveloped to be used more locally for the people in the area. We're losing the bank in Chepstow coming up shortly in October, so he buys bank. We have no banks in the area, we've got none in Cardiff, none in Meeger and the doctor surgery in Meeger is open four hours a day. So whilst all those concerns are there, we don't just give in because they're not there, we've got to fight and fight to get them. I understand councillor Dimmock's concerns about the development in, okay Port Skewett, that was going to be 900 houses some while ago and it was, when it was going to be 900 houses, the senate member from Monmouth was supporting it, whereas now the senate member from Monmouth is making objections to various things. So I feel there's a little bit of hypocrisy there. I don't have a lot to say really because most of it I said has been said by members as objections, I see them as concerns we've got to address. So I personally, personally we voted for the RLDP to go forward and I hope that when it goes forward, that we make proper advances with the government in power both in London and in Cardiff, that we try to resolve all these problems which have been there, they've been building up since 2010, 11, 12. Yes, B425 is a death trap in certain areas, the link off the M48 we haven't got, and High Beach Roundabout should have been sorted a long, long time ago. They're necessary to be sorted out and if we give in and don't push the RLDP forward, we just give it into more chaos. So I can't say any more than vote for it and let's move forward. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Howells please.
Thank you Chair, fellow councillors, residents. This is the second attempt to approve the replacement local development plan by Welsh Government. In 2021 councillors supported a plan for nearly 4,000 homes. Today, the revised plan puts forward just over 2,000. Yet this must be weighed up against the reality and that is over 2,000 households who are currently waiting for affordable housing. These are our nurses, carers, teachers, young families, people who are being priced out of our communities they love. In Usk, the RLDP proposes 40 homes over an eight-year period. That's only five a year. It is modest but essential. In the past decade, our over 65 demographic has grown in Usk by 22%, however, our working age families have declined. Usk primary school is forecasting fewer pupils. This is the trend we are facing. An aging population, a declining number of working age families. Without affordable homes to rebalance this, Usk risks becoming a retirement town with services like schools, buses and shops struggling to survive. Little Mill proposal is for 20 homes with a population of over 600 and an expected annual growth of 1%. This is actually in line with future demand for homes for the children and grandchildren who want to stay in the community today know. In Usk, some residents say they support more homes but not at the Buryam Gate 2 sites. Yet there are no alternative sites in Usk. Rejecting a viable site doesn't preserve our community, it freezes it, drives house prices up, pushes development elsewhere, forces our future generations to move away and leaving our elderly residents without the family network they rely on in their retiring years. Mumbashia has only two brownfield sites, therefore some development inevitably has to be on greenfield land. Our county is 88,000 hectares and predominantly green with 97% undeveloped. If all the site allocations within the RLDP were fully built on, the total additional land would amount to 226 hectares, which is only a quarter of 1% of the total land in Mumbashia. And let's remember, this quarter of 1% of land will have mitigation put in place to protect it from any loss to our natural habitat, wildlife or our risk to flooding. And these homes would be built net zero, to net zero environmental standards and 50% affordable. In my mind, this is responsible planning. As councillors, we place deep trust in the expert advice of our officers across planning, highways, flooding, nature, nature recovery, social care, education and decarbonisation. So what's stopping us from doing it now? They are highly qualified, experienced professionals who have worked together to shape this RLDP, grounding their recommendations in strong evidence, experience and a clear understanding of the needs of Mumbashia. By moving this plan forward, we acknowledge the dedication and hard work that has gone into securing a sustainable and thriving future for our county. The future Mumbashia deserves. What we have in Usk and across Mumbashia is special. However, protecting it doesn't mean standing still. It means growing wisely so our children and grandchildren can stay in the communities they love. For me, saying no to the 40 homes in Usk, the 20 in Little Mill and the other developments is saying no to the wider vision of our country, sorry, county. If we block these developments, we not only risk failing the families waiting for homes, we risk losing our future generations and worse still, we risk handing this decision to Welsh Government inspectors to make on our behalf. Speaking with residents, I know how divided opinion is on this. That's why I conducted my own survey and the result was clear, 50% in favour and 45% opposed. It shows there is a real support for moving forward. Today, we have a chance to do something lasting, to put forward a plan that supports our communities, protects our environment and builds a future for the next generation. Change isn't always easy, but standing still has consequences too. Protecting Mumbashia doesn't mean freezing it, it means planning wisely, growing responsibly and making decisions that keep our towns and villages thriving. This is why I support sending our replacement local development plan to Welsh Government for independent examination and ask you to join me in doing the same. Diakhwad, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Jackie Strong please.
Thank you Chair and thank you for allowing me to speak in this most important debate. I want to draw the members of the chamber back to the compelling discussions that we had in the Place Committee and in particular, the comments made by the head of Mumbashia Housing Association, Michelle Morgan, who talked about certain individuals that A) were helped by rehousing, but another person that would have no chance of getting a house, a roof and somewhere safe to stay. And that was probably about half of the people on the housing list would not have the opportunity to have a roof over their heads. So whilst we look at the planning in general, we also need to think about the people that in our day-to-day work as county councillors, we come into contact with, people that are in dire need of housing, people whose personal circumstances mean that their children are away from their school because they, you know, they're in possibly B&amp;B or away from their communities and their networks. I'm not going to sort of repeat some of the debate that's gone on in the chamber, but I'd like to talk about something that is possibly really dear to my heart and that's the community of County Cot. I take on board some of the comments that councillor Dimmock said, but I have to disagree. And I know there's been a discussion about whether the new development would be, should it presently be called County Cot East or Port Skewett North as a working title, I'm happy to go along with either, or to call it Crick or Mount Ballin. I don't suppose it will matter to the many people who desperately need that housing. I'm much more concerned about the issue of infrastructure. People will be aware that since my elections or two and a bit years ago, we have brought up the issue of the B4245, the need for the link road between the M4 and the B4245 and actually, and actually all the infrastructure that is in dire need of investment. But that said, we can't wait until infrastructure is in place, until we start to build the houses that people need. Clearly, things don't happen like that. Who's going to build a new primary school only to leave it empty for several years until there are enough houses to justify it? The RLDP does provide for a primary school within the County Cot East, Port Skewett North site, but it will be built and will grow as the numbers justify it. On the issues of infrastructure in general, it's instructed to look back at County Cot in the 1970s to see how infrastructure evolved alongside that rapid housing growth. Lots of new estates were built in County Cot in the 70s. As a result, by the end of the decade, the town had seen major improvements to infrastructure including a new bypass, major improvements to roads through the village, town, a new primary school, Duran School, a major expansion of the secondary school, a leisure centre, a health centre which was in Kymar Road, new pathways and cycle routes along the spine road, new facilities for the older people, the day luncheon centre for example, improvements to the country park. The level of growth being proposed under the RDLP isn't proportionally as great as the 70s, so the infrastructures won't be as massive, but by concentrating building within a certain area, it triggers infrastructure change in a way that thinly spread infills don't. It's really important that we look at this RDLP and we actually listen to those residents that come to us with their woes, with their concerns and with their circumstances that put them in dire straits and not having a roof over their heads. And we owe it to those families to actually pass this, so thank you.
Thank you. I've got, is either councillor Brown or councillor Thomas, I think the technology is playing fun with us. Councillor Thomas, you okay if I let councillor Brown go first?
Yeah, fine.
Yep, okay councillor Brown then.
Oh yes, thank you Chair. I wanted to say was that I was very disappointed that the Place Committee scrutiny meetings weren't at the top of the agenda, which, you know, I think they should have been because there was a full debate in there. I did mention all my concerns about the Shire Newton site due to lack of infrastructure on sewage and concerns about water as well and it being unacceptable to add housing to a sewage system that relies on bales of hay because the pipes are defective. And also with regard to the mountain road site, I did say that it was madness to build it right next to the High Beach Roundabout. It'll actually cause four extra barriers to the free flow of traffic from the High Beach Roundabout, access to and from the site, a crossing, a bicycle crossing across an extra green wedge area in the junction between St Lawrence's Road and the High Beach Roundabout, as well as basically reducing it from two lanes going into the High Beach Roundabout from St Lawrence's Road into one lane. In terms of the amendments to the plan, there've been very few as a result of the consultation and effectively they've crossed out all the neighbouring authorities' comments, which actually shows that the plan isn't sound. That's one of the tests of soundness. The Forest of Dean building will, houses will drastically affect Chepstow and it already does in terms of traffic flow. And I would, with regard to the earlier comments on the mountain road site, there is an alternative site. It's been a green wedge for four decades and also there is a presumption against development except in exceptional circumstances and there is an alternative site. Also, it was quoted incorrectly to say that...
Are you still there councillor? You might have muted yourself or whatever. Yeah, I think councillor Brown has lost connection there. I don't know if she can put anything in on the chat to say that she's still with us. I don't know if, can you hear us councillor Brown? I think she's frozen there. Right, what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow councillor Thomas to come in now and we'll give councillor Brown a chance to finish off after councillor Thomas. Yep. Oh, right. Sorry councillor Thomas. Councillor Brown, you froze for a while, you're back now, so we'd like to carry on.
Yeah, sorry, did you get the reference to the 2013 site? Can you hear me?
You're freezing again.
No, we didn't catch that.
Yeah, would it be an idea if you logged out and logged back in? Yep, and then what I'll do is while you're doing that, I'll take councillor Thomas and then you can come back in after councillor Thomas. Is that okay with you? Oh, must have been, she's logged out. Right, councillor Thomas.
Yes, thanks. Diakhwad, it's a little bit like being at the starting line of the Grand National, it's off, it's on and now it's back on. Anyway, I spoke at length in the Place Scrutiny Committee, I'm on that committee and I nailed my colours firmly to the mast in that meeting where I said I supported the current replacement LDP and I support it because there is such a huge need for affordable housing and it's there for people who cannot afford to buy a house in Mumbashia. You know, Mumbashia is probably the most expensive county in terms of private housing, certainly in Wales, but it's above some of the counties in England and if you're on even a reasonable salary, you are going to struggle to actually buy a house in Mumbashia. In my opinion, and I'm sure most people in this chamber would agree, if you took away some of the objections, is the fact that housing is a basic human right. You know, we all need to have a roof over our heads and we certainly need that whether you're single or you're with somebody or you're married, whether you've got children or not. But particularly if you've got children, you need a decent house to bring those children up, to have a garden so that those kids can go out and play, they can develop and grow and achieve their potential. That's one of our mainstays in terms of what it says of our mission statements on any letter or papers. on any letter or papers going out from Monmouthshire about giving everybody an equal chance. You do not give people an equal chance when they haven't got adequate housing. Private landlords often charge higher rents, they don't often provide houses or flats built to the same standard or maintained to the same standard as social housing. And that is something that we as a council have to try and correct. And it's no point today sitting here wringing our hands and saying, well, yes, I'd like to provide more housing. That's what we need to do, but it affects this part of the county or it affects that part of the county. And we throw it away. If we don't vote for this today, it won't be in the life of this council, it will be after 2027. And in that intervening period, we won't have a local development plan, and there's going to be a free for all. And some of those private builders will be rubbing their hands with glee because there will not be restrictions, and I think that that's going to be a travesty. Councillors like myself, all of us in the chamber, we have people coming to us with a problem of not having a suitable place to live. And what often happens when people, you know, there's marital breakup, relationship breakup or bereavement, people sometimes end up without housing. It's often said you're only one payday away from being homeless, particularly if you're on a low income, and if you haven't got affluent parents to back you up. And really, what we want to see today is to move, we're not going to end homelessness, we're not going to end some of these difficulties, but at least we'll do something to actually ameliorate that. And certainly in my experience, having helped people in Abigavenny, obviously, I'm a councillor in Park in Abigavenny in the north, but I remember well, one family who had four young children, they had a section 21 eviction notice placed on them by a private landlord because they basically, the landlord wanted to make more money, and they were made homeless. They ended up moving from Abigavenny to a hotel in Meirge. I would challenge anybody here to try to look after four young children in a couple of rooms in a hotel down in Meirge. It's nigh on impossible. And obviously, the problems that that causes will cost the authority so much more in the future in terms of dislocation of relationships, schooling, and the whole sort of things that go with living in a decent, stable home. In terms of Abigavenny, I support that, the H A one, the east of Abigavenny, 500 houses across the A four six five, which obviously is slightly problematic, and it's across the railway line. But on the other hand, M H A have said that they have a big interest in developing that it is close enough, as long as the proper links are put in place, to be made part of Abigavenny and to be accessible to the town. We absolutely need those houses in Abigavenny. We need the houses in other parts of the county. If anybody watched the Panorama programme earlier on in the week in a big authority in England, they had exactly the same problems, where the R D L P was voted out, and they just had more and more problems. If you look at the figures from M H A, 98 people are chasing every single property. You may as well go and do the lottery, in my opinion, if you're up against that sort of odds. Only one person is going to get, one family is going to get that house. And I just make a plea across political divides today, let's forget the political divides today, let's think about our constituents in this county who need houses. And I know that there will be certain difficulties, and we need to ameliorate those, but I strongly recommend people today to actually send this plan forward to P E D U, to the Planning Inspectorate in Cardiff in Welsh Government. They're independent, they're not politically driven, they are expert, and they will pick up some of the 4,000 objections that have been taken up, and hopefully they will do it objectively. And at least when we go to bed tonight, and probably will be fairly late after a long debate today, but we can at least go to bed with a clear conscience that we've actually helped people. That's why all of us came into this. We didn't hopefully come into it for any other reason, that's why I came into it, was to actually help people, so I make that very strong plea. Diocodai.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Brown, you're back with us, so I calculate you've got about seven minutes, slightly over seven minutes, okay?
Yeah, sorry, yeah. I was about to say that I think that these sites, as I've said previously, they need to have the, be conditional upon infrastructure requirements, you know, particularly for the High Beach roundabout, and obviously to ensure the infrastructure with regard to the Shire Newton site. I think that, I'm not quite sure whether you got my comment about the previous application for DC 2013 stroke 00571, which did actually ask for infrastructure improvements, and had drawn a High Beach roundabout drawing on it. So it wasn't just a question of the fact that, and that was only 35% affordable housing, and Taylor Wimpy walked away because they weren't prepared to sign the section 106 agreement. And obviously, the concern again was about the green wedge. What I was going to ask for is whether we could actually consider a closure of the debate under order 2722.1 in the constitution. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Watts, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Pausing for...
Chair?
Just hold your fire, please.
Can we ask councillor Brown to restate that, because I think what she was looking to do is to move a motion to adjourn the debate. I might have misheard that.
Right, that's councillor Brown, yeah?
Yeah, she says something right at the end, proposing...
Councillor Brown, were you proposing a motion to adjourn the debate or similar?
To vote, yeah.
Right, you're proposing a motion to move to a vote, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. That's perfectly in order to do that. Yeah, is there a second to move to the vote? Yeah, there are seconders, right. As I understand it, we don't discuss that, we just go immediately to the vote on that. All right, so we're going to vote, and the motion is that we move to a vote on item seven. This is not a vote for or against the plan, it's a vote on whether we're going to vote now or whether we're going to continue the debate. So, okay. So Nicola, you'll put that up for us?
So Chair, if we decide to go to a vote, how do we decide not to debate? What's the process?
Yeah, it's in the constitution, a constitution council reason, but any councillor at any time can propose that we move to the vote, and then it's up to the councillors as a whole to decide whether we've had sufficient debate on the on the matter. If, of course, if, of course, we do move to a vote...
Excuse me, Chair.
Well, I'm just going to say, if we do move to the vote, councillor Griffiths will get his chance to reply.
Excuse me, Chair, I believe it's your discretion as to whether we continue debate, and I would like to say strongly there are still voices to be heard. It's very important that we, this is probably one of the most important debates we will have in this administration.
Could we move an amendment then that we don't go to the vote? Don't go to that question.
I don't think that's an amendment, I think that's, I don't know.
I understand what the leader's saying, I believe her, that's right.
If it's helpful, members, the Chair doesn't have discretion in this matter. Councillor Brown has the right to move the motion that she's done. If you support her motion, we will then move to a vote on the item. If you do not support her motion, then the debate will continue. Is that clear? So if you want to continue debate, you vote against this motion. If you want to end debate and move to a final vote, you support the motion. I don't know, Nicola, whether you put it in the chat yet? Are you all clear?
Okay, so we'll move to a vote now, so is yes for move to a vote? No for not move to a vote? Is it on the chat? I can't see it.
Chair, can I just say, can we have a recorded vote on this?
I don't, I don't think you have a recorded vote on a procedural motion, do you?
I second that, Chair. Yeah. Recorded vote. It's terrible you want to frustrate the debate, it's terrible.
Okay, all right, there's been a request for a recorded vote. I need to see, is it nine councillors?
Do we have your casting vote on what we got there, no Chair?
Okay, hold on, hold on, Tony, I can't hear you.
Sorry, you got...
Right, can I see, who was it who proposed the recorded vote? That councillor Crook, okay. Can I see those also in favour of a recorded vote? Right, so let me count, one, two, three, four, five, six, that's enough. Okay, we'll have a recorded vote on whether we move to a vote.
Okay, councillor Bond.
Thank you, this is too important not to let everybody have a voice against going to a vote.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Against, Chair.
Councillor Bromfield.
Or.
Councillor Brown.
Or.
Councillor Bryn.
Against.
Councillor Buckler.
For.
Councillor Birch.
Against.
Councillor Butler.
For.
Councillor Callard.
Against.
Councillor Chandler.
It's shameful to stifle the debate so early, so I'm against.
Councillor Crook. Councillor Davis.
For.
Councillor Dimmock.
Or.
Councillor Ethan.
Councillor... May I, against a continuing debate?
Councillor Edwards.
For.
Councillor Newall.
For.
Councillor Garrett.
Against.
Councillor Garrick.
Against.
Councillor Griffiths.
Against.
Councillor Grokot.
Against.
Councillor Howes. Councillor Howells.
I'm shocked, against.
Councillor John.
For.
Councillor David Jones.
Against.
Councillor Penny Jones.
For.
Councillor Keir.
For.
Councillor Lane.
Or.
Councillor Lucas.
For.
Councillor Mayby.
Against.
Councillor McConnell.
Against.
Councillor McKenna.
Or.
Councillor Murphy.
For.
Councillor Neil.
For.
Councillor Pavia.
For.
Councillor Powell.
For.
Councillor Riley.
Against.
Councillor Ruck.
Against.
Councillor Sandals.
Against.
Councillor Jackie Strong.
Against.
Councillor Peter Strong.
Against.
Councillor Taylor.
Against.
Councillor Thomas.
Against.
Watts. Councillor Watts, you're on mute.
Yes, Chair, I'm a Democrat, I'll be voting against.
Councillor Webb. Councillor Wright.
Against.
Yeah, against. 20, 20.
Yeah, we just got to watch something. Right, so the results on the recorded vote, in favour of moving to a vote is 20, against is 25, so the motion is lost, we will continue the debate. Who wouldn't want to hear from councillor Watts? He's up next.
Indeed, thank you, Chair, thank you for your patience, and I'm really dismayed, really, there's been some kind of conspiracy really within the Conservative Party to stifle debate, and then to deny the public who are listening in, really, an understanding of how we've come to our decisions, or how we think and how we feel as elected members, is probably the most undemocratic thing in the 22 years I've been on this, or I think I've ever witnessed, even with conservatives in the...
Councillor Watts, we've already voted on that particular motion. Can we now, hush please, not the House of Commons, we have higher standards here. Councillor Watts, can you speak to the issue of the development plan, please? Yep, what you were going to say before, we discussed having a vote.
My point was really, Chair, that by 2033, I'll be 65. I know that's hard to believe, so I know you want me to keep on point, but by then we'll have 31,157 people over 65. That's almost the combined population of Chepstow and minus Lisa's bit of Caledicott, Port Skewett, together 65, that's a huge amount. It would be a dereliction of duty to effectively allow that to continue. We're not sustainable, all the networks, the family networks that we used to rely on, particularly in Bulwark and Caledicott, people used to care for each other, their families, their neighbours, and that would just dissipate at a greater pace than it already has. So we have to make progress on that, and that is my point. Sorry to repeat anything that's been said before, thank you, Chair.
Right, thank you councillor. Councillor Pavia.
Yes, thanks, Chair, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. Can I associate myself with comments that colleagues have made in relation to acknowledging the work of officers who've put a huge amount of time and effort into this process? I think it's started back 27, 2017, maybe 2018, just after I got elected, and obviously the pandemic inhibited the process somewhat as well, so hence why we have this elongated timeframe. I know how complex the replacement local development plan is, and how much technical rigor has gone into shaping what is before us today. And I think in light of that, I think we all as councillors are quite acutely aware of the ramifications if the plan is not approved today. But I also come here this afternoon as the elected member for Man Pleasant in Chepstow, a ward that has been overwhelmingly clear, I think, and consistent in its views about this plan. Those views aren't about resisting growth for growth's sake, they're about getting growth right, ensuring that what we build is deliverable, is sustainable, and is aligned with the principles of key Welsh legislation, like the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act. And Chair, I think I have to say plainly, the inclusion of the Mountain Road site within this deposit, our L D P, has shaken residents' confidence in that principle. I think over the past three years, the same concerns have been raised by residents of Chepstow at every stage, whether that was the post-Cover review during the revised preferred strategy, and during the draft deposit plan consultation last winter. There was concerns about traffic pressures, about public service infrastructure, about air quality, about environmental degradation, and the town's capacity to absorb further significant growth, whether that was initially in Bayfields or now at this proposed location in Mountain Road. Those concerns, I don't believe were hypothetical, they were evidenced, repeated and detailed. And yet, this afternoon, the cabinet member presents a final plan which largely ignores those consultation responses. And I think as colleagues, some colleagues have said already, at each stage, we were told that these are just early proposals, there'll be further consultation, and everything is still open to discussion. And residents heard that, they engaged in good faith, I think as councillor Edward said, over 4,000 individual representations were received. And I think the Mountain Road allocation had probably the most responses of all the site allocations presented. The overwhelming majority were against the proposals. And yet, what was the outcome? As councillor John said, a few grammatical corrections, some formatting updates, and what the report says, and many of the responses to consultees, minor non-material changes. Residents have taken the time to make well-researched submissions. You heard Richard Liddell earlier this afternoon, someone who has considerable knowledge and experience of the sector, and the response is that their evidence is non-material. I believe that's something that has gone seriously wrong here between the relationship between the council and the communities it serves. The cabinet member gave the rationale for, for the approach today, saying effectively that the council's hands are tied and there's nothing that could be changed and it has to go to Welsh Government in this, in this guise, uh, uh, to, uh, for them to recommend any proposed changes. Surely that cannot be right, surely that cannot be right. Um, I think, uh, Chair, the, if we look at the specifics of, uh, the mountain road allocation in Chelmsford, uh, it's on the edge of the town's green wedge. Uh, an area which plays a, a vital role as a natural buffer between Chelmsford, Mather and Plumeryc, and it is a gateway to the Y Valley area of outstanding natural beauty. Uh, and for me, I think the allocation raises three sets of problems, environmental, infrastructural and, and legal. Uh, as we all know, Chelmsford is one of only two towns in Monmouthshire that has an air quality management area. I, I guess may be shortly, shortly removed from that. Uh, but High Beach roundabout, particularly A forty-eight corridor consistently records nitrogen dioxide levels above, uh, recognised safety thresholds. Whilst there has been a stabilisation in pollutants over the last two years, uh, we have seen a slight, uh, dip, uh, in, in those, uh, nitrate pollutants. And I think the majority of that is probably due to electric and hybrid cars, it's not due to a, a, a lower volume of traffic, that's certainly not the case. These two particular areas, High Beach and A forty-eight corridor, are, are two areas that remain a, a hot spot. Uh, and we saw, uh, we've given information from the last, uh, air quality pollution meeting in, in October, uh, earlier this month, sorry, that there was a spike in pollutants again over the summer, undoubtedly exacerbated by the, the hot weather. Yet this plan allocates new development directly adjacent to the zone. The expected increase in vehicle movement, not just from residents, uh, from, from, from those residential dwellings, but potentially a hotel, potentially a, a care home, will certainly intensify congestion and emissions in what is already a, a public health black spot. I don't think that's scaremongering, I think that's fact. Uh, you know, the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act, the Public Health Wales Act, the Environmental Air Quality and Soundscape Wales Act, all place clear duties on the authority to reduce exposure to harmful pollutants. And yet we're being asked to approve a plan that will be, by any rational reading of the information and the evidence that's been, uh, given to us, that increase that exposure. Residents in Mount Pleasant and across Chelmsford are realistic, they understand that housing brings people and people bring additional calls on public services on existing infrastructure. But what they cannot understand, and neither can I, and I've said this repeatedly over the occasions that we've discussed, the, uh, the LP in this council, is how this council continues to make major allocations without resolving the infrastructure challenges that already exist. GP practices are overstretched, the majority of dental practices in Chelmsford now are, are, are private practices. The road network, particularly the A forty-eight, the A four-six-six and High Beach roundabouts, uh, are breaking point. As councillor Edwards said earlier on, we have no firm commitment from Welsh Government, uh, uh, on what it plans to do at High Beach. The councils made no progress with the chapter bypass or relief road or whatever it wants to call it, despite Gloucestershire County Council publicly setting aside five hundred thousand pound to progress the plans to next stage. They know, as councillor Brown said, with proposed development of Beachley, there's a tsunami of a problem coming down the track if nothing is done. And again, as councillor Edwards rightly stated, since the preferred strategy was approved, we've had infrastructure failures both on the M forty-eight seven bridge and in the old Y Bridge as well. If you have no detailed plan, uh, uh, around highway improvements. This administration is effectively asking us and our communities to take it on trust that these problems will somehow be resolved in the future. And I don't think that is a, a sound basis for plan making, uh, it's just wishful thinking. The mountain roadside lies on high-grade agricultural land, part of the green wedge, as I said, protecting the trans- the transition from town to countryside. It contributes to biodiversity, acts as a carbon sink and frames one of the most scenic entrances to Wales. Once developed colleagues, that landscape, that sense of place is gone, gone forever. This proposal conflicts directly, I think, with the Historic Environmental Wales Act twenty twenty-three and with the Environment Wales Act twenty sixteen and the council's own climate and nature emergency commitments as well, we must remember them. If we are serious about sustainable placemaking and paving over a, a green gateway to an area of outstanding natural beauty is certainly not the way to show it. Beyond the, the local impacts, the inclusion of mountain road raises serious questions about this plan's soundness and councillor Brown touched on that in her, uh, in her contribution. I think the plan, uh, the development plan manual sets out four key tests and in my view the site fails at least on three of them. C two on consistency, it's inconsistent with national environmental policies. C three on coherence, there is no coherent infrastructure development, uh, delivery plan or phase strategy. And C four, evidence, and the environmental and traffic evidence is incomplete and selective and notably failing to account for the cumulative, uh, uh, air quality effects, uh, uh, over the last decade. Uh, I think pressing ahead regardless, the council risks the entire plan being found, uh, uh, unsounded examination phase with Welsh Government. And if that happens, not only will use of work be wasted, but this county, this county could be left exposed to speculative development, I think this councillor Butler, uh, alluded to in her contribution, precisely the situation we're supposed to, to try to avoid. Chair, I want to be clear, I want to support the principle of a robust, lawful, deliverable local development plan. I recognise the need for affordable housing, for economic growth, uh, for balanced demographics. I think councillor Watts played that, uh, uh, perfectly in, in his contribution. I can't believe he's sixty-five i- in, in that short space.
Half, half a minute councillor.
Neither can I. But those, those are share goals, I think, across the council. But I think this plan undermines public health, it overloads local infrastructure and demand, uh, and damages a, a nationally significant landscape that, that cannot be described as, uh, uh, unsustainable. I think the, uh, the administration should pause here, should remove the mountain road allocation. I don't think that, that would be a sign of weakness, but it would be a sign of integrity and respect for the people who put their trust in us and who responded positively to this consultation. Chair, I think we owe it to residents, not just in Mount Pleasant, but across Chelmsford, to deliver a plan that works with our communities, not against them. Thank you Chair.
Thank, thank you councillor. Uh, now councillor Garretts, please.
Thank you Chair, I'm surprised any more conservatives wanted to speak after the political stunt of a motion we just had. I'd like to thank officers and councillor Griffiths for their hard work in preparing the plan. As councillor Thomas mentioned, BBC Panorama this week showed the South Tyneside LDP piled up on a table to show what seventeen thousand pages looked like. That plan was rejected. A majority of councils across the border in England have no LDP in place. Let us not continue that trend in Monmouthshire. Many of us are residents in housing crisis and in need of affordable property for rent, let alone to buy, with houses costing ten, twelve times a person's annual salary. At times today, this meeting's resemble the political hustings we've heard from two Welsh Centre List candidates campaigning in their speeches, putting forward short-term political ambition at the expense of the residents who are desperate for a place to call home. Where will our young people be able to live in ten years' time without affordable homes? We've heard people who need affordable homes being castigated and the prospect of purchases of market homes will not buy with fifty percent social housing. Surely we all support communities that promote social cohesion and unity. I was surprised with councillor Dimmock's criticism of the placemaking plan, which many town and community councillors will have been involved in with local residents and community leaders. I do not recognise her comments about the process. The one I've been involved in Monmouth Town Council has been very, working together with lots of residents, we've had a really collegiate approach. The placemaking plan has required to secure funding from Welsh Government. In Monmouth, we've already considered the allocation of funds to move forward some of our plans. Her comments showed disrespect to MCC officers who must have been in the plan that she was involved in, and I hope she will apologise to those officers after this meeting. While this is a political decision, every councillor has a duty to think about the wellbeing of future generations. If the plan falls today, there is no plan for the rest of this term of the council. Councillor Pavia offered an easy get-out of removing one item, but I don't think it's as easy as that, so I'm sure councillor Griffiths will sum up at the end. If, if it falls today, then who will, nobody knows who's gonna be sitting here in this chamber for May twenty twenty-seven and this process will have to start again at great expense. I'm sure we will enjoy seeing our beautiful county of Monmouthshire represented on television, lifestyle property shows which bring in wealthy couples buying up rural properties. We have an aging population, as we've, we've already discussed, who benefit from rising housing prices, but the skewed market in Monmouthshire makes it less affordable and housing costs are higher proportion of people's salaries than they did when I first purchased a home. Again, some of the speeches, again, have resembled, uh, made this meeting resemble a planning meeting. Residents can be assured that the sites in the plan will still be subject to the robust scrutiny of the planning process. And many of those members of the planning committee are here today who are basically prepared to reject this plan, which I'm really shocked at. So the proposed housing will bring in net zero carbon housing, homes generating electricity off the gas network. Other councils will look to Monmouthshire and as councillor Griffiths explained, developers have been told any dilution of the housing mix will be met with robust challenge and the choice to put up will shut up. Monmouthshire needs this plan. I will be supporting the plan for referral to the planning inspector and I hope members on the other side will do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Do I stand corrected? Councillor Callard, right, okay. Right, okay, councillor Callard.
Thank you Chair, sorry, there's just a flurry, a late flurry of hands there. Um, uh, I've, I've been listening to the debate so far, uh, and it has been very interesting. And I've been really struck by the fact that, that many councillors, um, opposite, uh, it seems to me that they don't want any development as far as I can gather. Um, you know, which, which I can get, you know, we've, we've had councillor Dimmock talk about, um, you know, develop, changing the character of a place. I, I think that's an interesting concept, that the house I live in is, is about a hundred and thirty years old, it's in Abigeheny. I, I bet when that house was built, it changes the character of the place. Changing the character of a place can be a positive thing. Um, and I honestly believe that the development being proposed in this development plan will enhance our communities. Um, and I think actually with the, with the net zero carbon homes, with the solar generation, with the heat pumps, it, 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 it will be a case study for other local authorities to follow in terms of what good development looks like. Um, it's also worth pointing out that while members opposite say, you know, seem to, to, to reject any development, is that many of those members were sat there supporting the previous LDP, which had nearly twice as many homes as this one. Um, and I really struggle to draw that, you know, councillor Dimmock was, was sat in the last council, councillor John was sat in the last council. And they say that this is too much development, where their own administration proposed nearly double. Uh, you know, and I'd like residents to hear that point and listen to it, because if this, if this plan doesn't pass today, a new plan will need to be bought. Uh, it will come with new sites, it will come with, uh, potentially new objectives with the next council. And I think we need to ask ourselves how that plan would differ from this one and would it be better? I think the plan, um, that councillor Griffiths has put forward today is a very, very strong plan. I think a lot of the questions that were asked in people's speeches, and I appreciate they were pre-written speeches, those questions were already answered in the introduction. I know more questions have come forward and I'm confident that councillor Griffiths will address them when he sums up, but I'd encourage everybody to support this plan. Um, when I, I, you know, we, we, we all go around and knock on doors and there's been times in my ward, as it has been with many of our wards, where I've spoken to residents and they've been concerned about development going on in their area. Um, and having lived in Abigeheny for an awful long time, um, uh, you know, I'm often found in the situation where I can, I can say to them, do you know, I remember when your house was being built and I remember people objecting to that being built. And, you know, it, it struck me as one of those things, is that no one will object to the house when they live in being built. Um, along with many of my colleagues, this plan will make, uh, will, will make a huge difference to Monmouthshire in a really positive light. It will provide homes for the future generations to come and live in this county, it will keep our county growing, um, and I hope the council can support it today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Uh, councillor Martin Newall, please.
Uh, thank you Chair. Uh, first of all, uh, really interesting debates and can I associate myself with the comments of the officers and, uh, colleagues that have produced this document, um, seventeen thousand pages of my agenda. Um, I bought an extra hard drive just to download the thing, but well done to everyone. Um, and of course, as a conservative councillor and also as a mortgage and finance broker, I'm all in favour of homeownership and I, it's everyone's dream to own their own home. And, um, I take huge joy in my, my other day job in helping people, young, old, buying their own homes. So I'm, I'm all for home development and as a mortgage broker, I'd be mad if I wasn't. I'm also an advocate of affordable housing and I pay tribute to colleagues in housing associations for the work they do. I'm a particular fan of the shared equity scheme, which I think we've got right in Wales where, uh, an applicant will buy half a house and they don't pay rent on the other half. Across the border in England, they can buy the same fifty percent of house and then have to pay rent. So I do think we, there are some things we're, we're getting right. So congratulations to Michelle Morgan and Amy Bryan and her team at the Housing Associations. The difficulty I have today as a councillor, um, is that I'm being asked to vote on a, on a, a plan in, in its entirety. This is a plan that I've, I've gone through, spoken with colleagues and it has some really, really, um, good attributes, uh, which I'm happy to support. But sadly, there are too many issues here that I can't support. And that's why when I'm asked to vote later on, I have to vote, vote against this plan, because I'm being asked to vote as, as it is in the whole. My colleagues in chamber, uh, will of course speak about their own areas, I'm not from Chelmsford, Cawdych, Abigeheny, so I won't even insult anyone's intelligence by speaking about th- those areas. But I will speak about my hometown, uh, Monmouth. Uh, Monmouth, I love it. I, I live there, I work there, went to school there, did everything I do is in Monmouth. We are subject to three development plans or development sites on these plans. Two of them, two of them I think are okay, one definitely needs to be thrown in the bin straight away. I'll start with, um, I'll start with Wysham. Wysham needs more affordable housing and I think it's a great idea that, and I think it's a, it's a really good site, uh, to build more affordable housing. I don't have a problem. The houses are gonna be built though on a side of a hill. And I was out canvassing recently with my new town councillor colleague Xavier Turner. We were speaking to, to residents, um, at the bottom of Tudor Road, which is at the bottom of a hill, they were having culverts dug in the bottom of their gardens even before a brick is laid. Their houses are becoming flooded already, even before a brick is laid on these new houses. That, we need to revisit that and see how, um, floodwater and, and as councillor Mayby suggests, all these extra flood events, uh, are gonna affect these residents at the lower end of Tudor Road. Um, but the other thing that suggests that this plan is being constructed amongst chaos in, in my colleagues' opposite, is that they were discussing and arranging new affordable houses whilst coming up with a plan, which thankfully I've thrown away, to close the local primary school. It's crazy colleagues. Thankfully, they've seen sense, they listened to the residents, they are no longer gonna consider closing Kimmin View. But it just shouts chaos to me and it shouted chaos.
That, 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 I'm sorry to interrupt, that's not true.
I'm, I'm sorry, we've, we, that is true and you, and you, and you know it.
Uh, no, it's not councillor.
I haven't interrupted anyone, please, you, you.
Councillors will have a chance to reply.
Thank you, thank you Chair, I appreciate that. So, but all in all, I think it's a good site to build houses. The other, the other place, uh, in Monmouth, the Wanster Road Development, I think, um, it's gonna join two very successful, uh, modern building estates in, in Monmouth, the new Rockfield Estate and the Wanster Road Estate. Very lovely areas to live, in fact, I lived in the new Rockfield Estate and these new houses that are planned will, will join those two estates. The, um, infrastructure's there, the active travel route is, is almost completed in that area. Um, all I would urge there is that, um, councillors, uh, work with residents and consider the residents on Watery Lane and not use our entrance to the site. But all in all, another good part of this plan. I'm not here to, to say it's all rubbish, because it's not all rubbish. Dixon Road is where I have a problem. And first of all, can I pray, play tribute, uh, pay tribute to local residents, John T Pearce, Rebecca Cunningham, uh, Frank Brahaney and Mr David Cummins for their hard work, um, just for their sheer determination, their hard work for the reports and the evidence that they have provided, that why we shouldn't go ahead with this development. And while Mr Cummins is here, please, on behalf of myself and my colleague Jane, pass on our sincerest condolences. Um, I'm not sure if he's still here in chamber, he recently lost his wife, we, we, our thoughts are with you. John T, um, has, has stood at the, um, at the podium at the front and has made a compelling case as to why we shouldn't go ahead, about the bats and the, the danger, the ecological reasons why we shouldn't do this. The other reason we shouldn't be doing this is the gateway to Wales from the West Midlands. We need a green wedge on that site. The first thing we're gonna see, instead of seeing the beautiful Y River and the Y Bridge and the, the beautiful school that we built, is a brand new stock of two hundred and seven, seventy soulless new buildings. We have a duty to protect that gre- we have a duty to protect that green wedge as people are coming into Wales. It's something I'm quite passionate about. But the other thing that really, really gets my goat about what's happened is that the hard work that these residents have put forward is just being ignored. Four thousand objections to this plan. And like my colleagues, I'm not gonna repeat it, it's just grammatical changes and they're just being ignored. I'm not going to be ignored. I've been elected to represent their views and finally, I'd like to thank Mr Brahaney as well for his amazing report on the negative effect that these new houses will have on air quality. Air quality in that area and building so many houses to the local comprehensive school. It's, I don't know who's coming up with this madness, but anyway. Two out of three developments in Monmouth great. The third one, Dicton View, no, not for me. Or not for my residents, I do beg your pardon. The placemaking scheme in Monmouth, fully support that, along with my colleague councillor Garrett, that's a great plan. And I look forward to the Monmouth Town Centre being renovated and, you know, coming back to its best. So like I said, in summary, some good points, some not so good points, things I can support, things I won't support. But I will continue to represent my residents, make sure their views are being listened to. And I'm being asked to vote for this plan in a whole. And as a whole, I cannot support it because there's things that need changing. And Chair, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you councillor. Just before I bring councillor Davis in. Councillor Bond, you, you had your hand up at one stage, go back down again. Do you wish to speak after councillor Davis?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay, all right. So it'll be councillor Davis, then councillor Bond, and I see there's members after that. Oh, did he? Okay, so that's, that's disappeared as well. Right. Okay, so we'll do councillor Davis, councillor Bond, councillor Howarth, is that okay with you? No, okay, I've got a nod there.
I think you've got councillor, it says Davis first, then maybe then.
Yeah, the order I'm going to take then is, is Davis, Bond, Howarth and then councillor Maybe. Councillor Davis, floor is yours.
Thank you Chairman. And it's a real pleasure to follow my good friend councillor Newell after those passionate remarks which I wholeheartedly endorse, particularly the point about the importance of home ownership. And if I may begin by directly addressing councillor Calard's remarks earlier, that somehow these colleagues of mine on these benches are somehow anti-development. There are few ambitions more deeply rooted in the British psyche than that desire to own one's own home. It's not just about bricks and mortar, it's about belonging, it's about that sense of security, about the belief that through effort, through sacrifice, you can build something truly yours. And yet colleagues today, that dream feels further away than at any point in living memory. As we've heard from colleagues, the average first time buyer is now some 34 years of age, 10 years older than a generation or so ago. Meanwhile, home ownership among the under 35s has plummeted since the early 1990s. And here in Monmouthshire, we see the human cost every day. Young people born here, raised here, who aspire to work here and raise a family priced out of their own communities. Parents who watch their grown up children forced to leave this county, not out of choice, but out of necessity. A county once defined by opportunity is fast becoming, I'm afraid, a place where opportunity itself is being rationed. Now I say this as a proud member of my group and of these benches. We should be deeply, deeply uncomfortable with that reality. This party once led on housing. Harold Macmillan famously built 300,000 homes a year in the 1950s. Not because it was easy, because it was the right thing to do. He understood that the property owning democracy wasn't simply a slogan, it was a moral duty. A generation or so later, another prime minister famously turned tenants into owners, giving millions a tangible stake in society. She knew, as we do on these benches, that ownership is the foundation of economic independence. That colleagues was the politics of aspiration, a politics which empowered and not blocked. But I'm afraid somewhere along the line, we have lost that zeal. Too often, we have become the party of hesitation of, I'm in favour of development, but. Each but colleagues may well sound harmless. But when you stack them high together, they form a wall high enough to keep an entire generation locked out of the housing market. If we're to be a county of opportunity, we must stop flinching at the very thing that creates it. The courage and the conviction to build. Now, before Labour colleagues get too excited and before any more of my own colleagues start shifting uncomfortably in their own seats, let me make something perfectly clear. Support for home ownership does not necessarily translate into support for this RDLP. Because I am and I remain pro-development. But I'm not, as many of our colleagues have articulated in similar terms, I am not pro-bad development. Nor am I pro-box sticking and I'm certainly not pro-consultation or consultation for consultations sake. Um, Chair, I, I fear that this RDLP, for all the glossy presentation, falls somewhat short of what Monmouthshire and our people deserve. Residents, as we've heard from colleagues, have written in their droves frustrated and disillusioned with the entire process. They feel that this plan has been done to them, not with them. And as I raised in the Place Scrutiny Committee colleagues, the consultation process too often felt like a formality rather than a genuine two-way conversation. And I remain unconvinced to this very day that this exercise met those gunning principles of sound public consultation. Then, as we've heard from other colleagues, there remain the questions of viability. Particularly if I may say so councillor Griffiths, around the flagship Abigavenny East site. Ambitious, yes, and I commend the cabinet member for that ambition. But serious question marks remain over boundaries, over land ownership and over the infrastructure that's required. If councillors, we approve a plan that promises more than it can deliver, I fear we risk undermining the very confidence we need to build anything at all in this county. As we've heard from so many colleagues this afternoon, who've reflected on their individual candidate sites in their respective wards, we've been reassured time and time again that the roads, the infrastructure, the community services, the school places will all follow as night follows day. And yet we all know from experience, from bitter experience, particularly in the case of Clonvois Vawd, if I may say so, where we've absorbed our fair share of development over many years. We all know all too well that such promises often fade with the daylight. Monmouthshire deserves better colleagues and a plan that overreaches in ambition and I fear underdelivers in its realism. To build is not in itself a virtue, to build wisely, that is what earns trust. I'm not alone in this chamber in wanting to restore the hope of home ownership. And to send a signal, particularly to those young families across Monmouthshire, you have a future here. But nor can I be the only councillor here this evening who fears that this plan leaves too many questions unanswered and does not command sufficient public legitimacy or public consent. Now colleagues, I started my intervention by quoting the legacy of Supermac. Let me conclude by doing so once again. Macmillan famously said, "The only sound basis of building is honest ground." A reminder colleagues that before we build more, we must first build better. When I cast my vote, it'll be for a very, very basic principle. That plans must earn the trust and the confidence of the very people and the communities that we as councillors serve. Reluctantly, this RDLP asks for faith it has simply not yet earned. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Davis. Yes, you had us all going there for, for a moment. Councillor Bond please.
Thank you Chair, just a couple of corrections first. The Wysham MHA houses and Druin Farm have already been approved by planning. And the Kymun School was never planned to be closed, that's incorrect. So, so my input please. So thank you again for officers and everybody involved and the respondents brilliant. And as we say, this is only the first step to go to PDU to get validated against the responses and all the arguments for and against. So this isn't the end of it, but we need to get it done. Because as a Caldercot resident and a ward representative, I fully understand the views of some who don't want change or more houses in their area. But as I'm not familiar with lots of the areas on planning, I suggest that we have to do something, especially in Caldercot. It's dying, the centres dying, the leisure centres well, falling apart as we know and limping along. So I guess that all of us talking here and perhaps maybe most of the respondents already have a permanent home because, you know, they've got access and whatever. So, so we need to be thinking about those 3800 greater than 3800, which is a third the size of the population of Chepstow, think about that. Those people do not have permanent homes. So please think about the effect of home security and stability needed for those residents. The mental and physical wellbeing, but also especially the best, the children, the better development for the children. If you look at the Marmot Report, it says that it's significant impact of temporary housing on health, particularly for children. So we need to do something about this, otherwise we're storing up other, other illnesses, other issues, health, NHS, whatever, and longer term issues for people. And we're not, we're not representing everybody within our within our constituencies or that we're supposed to be representing. So half of the cases that, that come to me are about housing. People trying to get housing, trying to get bigger housing because their, their families are too big for the housing they've got or get out of temporary or, and we have a responsibility as representatives to consider all residents, not just the, the ones who don't want any housing in their, close to them and, and be strategic. Thinking of the long-term benefit for all in Monmouthshire. Their care, their employment and their wellbeing. We need affordable homes. As we, as we know, we've heard about 10% of those who, who try for homes or get on the home search, only 10% are successful. So we also need to bring families in as has already been said, because the aging demographic of Monmouthshire. We also need, we need building, we need the money to come into, to Monmouthshire and particularly into our towns. The infrastructure, infrastructure is already affected by austerity and underfunding and everything that's gone on before. And, and these are being worked on, but as we say, we can't wait until they're completed, like the M48 access road which is in plans. And to say that we haven't done it, or, or at least the administration now hasn't done anything when there's, there was a number of years, was it 10 or so before that, where nothing was solved before that. So there are existing issues and they are significant, but they need to be sorted now. And when the, these sites come for planning in the future, they will be considered by the planning committee and, or the pros and cons taken then. So it's wrong to be making those decisions now. So we've got, we've got issues, significant issues in Caldercot, like the leisure centre which I said. Even though despite the, the wonderful staff, it's limping along. And facilities such as the skate parks falling apart and becoming dangerous. So, not quite dangerous, so don't shut it yet please. So without change, we'll not get the investment to rectify these severe problems. Myself, and particularly on, and the people I've talked to are particularly pleased with the net zero carbon homes and the aspirations for, for the future generations to start changing behaviours and the way that we treat our planet. And also the opportunity for jobs, the Crick site isn't being mentioned yet, there's a wonderful opportunity by the solar farm for a depot, for some, for employment, for, for maintenance or, but also the, the creation of hydrogen for future fuel for our transport needs. So there's opportunities there. So please for me, these plans need to go to the next stage, to be independently assessed against the consultation responses and concepts. Then we can really work towards improving the lives, employment and housing availability. Improving wellbeing for all our people. Not just those already in permanent homes. And try to protect the environment for the future. We have to pass these plans to the next stage. We cannot stay, stay still if over 3800 people haven't got homes or at least permanent homes. We have to do something, we have to do it now, we cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Howarth please.
Is that correct Chair? I'm red. I'm generally green or whatever. Okay, thank you Chair. Members, many of you won't have been involved with the last plan we had in 2012, but we did go on for many, many hours and we did get a compromise in the end. What I see with this plan Chair is that there's no compromises to be had. We're at the stage now today, whether we like it or not, if we don't like it, we don't vote for it. We have been informed that it goes back to square one again. That I do not believe Chair. I believe that what we have in this plan is not agreeable in some aspects. And number one, I'll go to Raglan. The solar farm in Raglan taking livelihoods away from a family where an option was available to actually move the solar farm to somewhere else. We never looked at that, we haven't amended that. I listened to the young man pleading with this council to actually change direction on that farm and on that land. We haven't listened to nothing. I think the one thing I'm taking from today, and I've taken probably over the last three years, is trust. Do our constituents out there actually trust this council? What we do, what we say, what decisions we make. The impression I'm having is actually, I think trust is wavering. Over 4000, there's probably a lot more though, 4000 constituents of this county made representation to this plan. What I heard in that meeting some weeks ago was is we didn't care about what they said. That was the impression I had from, from, from the cabinet member. We weren't listening to nothing they said. This plan had to go to the inspector, he would make his decision on, on where we go with this plan. I've dealt with the inspectors down in Cardiff, I've dealt with them on a couple of occasions now and we are dealing with them on some planning applications within the wind farms. I believe the inspectors down in Cardiff are employed by the Welsh Government. They pay their wages, they're supposed to be independent. I don't believe they'll listen to anything in this plan, that's my personal view, that's not the council's view, that's my personal view. Will they listen to the young man from Raglan? His farm will be destroyed because we want to put a solar farm there to, to develop something in our interests? I don't think so. And that's why today, that's just one reason, and that's the one reason today, why I will not support this plan. There's some really good aspects in this plan and I've got to say cabinet member and staff, I adore you for putting this plan forward, some really good stuff in there, but there's some really poor stuff. I've listened to members with objections today and I've listened to them in the last few weeks. They could have been overcome, but why do we not listen as a council? Is it all politics? I'm sorry, but we have over 90,000 people in this county. We should start to listen and start to listen to what their thoughts are. We don't do it. And why? I don't know. I, 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 honestly, I believe politics and the steer of this country at the moment is in such a poor state that nobody wants to listen to anybody. And I'm talking about educated people. We had a man up there today who was, who was really educated in planting and spoke and it was as though it was a bluff, as though he shouldn't have been here. I'm sorry, but that does not wash with me. Experienced professional people we have to listen to, more experienced than we'll ever be, but we do not listen to them. Sorry cabinet member if I'm upsetting you again. Chairman, we as a council need to start listening to our constituents. This is our county. Yes, we need affordable homes. I've been talking about affordable homes for many, many years, a place to call home. For many years. Roger Harris, ex-councillor, Phil Hobson, ex-councillor, myself. for many years. Roger Harris, ex councillor, Phil Hobson, ex councillor, myself. Chairman, if I'm boring you, if you want to look the other way, I'm sorry, but it's just the way it is. We've been there for many, many years, Chair, on affordable homes. Exception sites, I've never, nobody's ever spoke about exception sites today? Sorry, councillor Callard, you don't impress me.
Chairman. Let's, let's, let's calm it, please, okay?
Chairman.
Councillor Howard, the floor is yours, okay, you've got another question.
Okay, I know, I know, that's all right. Chairman, we, we haven't even spoken about exception sites. We, we as a county for the last many, many years have had opportunity of delivering affordable homes on exception sites. I remember the site in Goitra, a wonderful site there, at the side of the, the road, and there was there was plans to perhaps progress that site there, there is land to do that. And we can deliver affordable homes. Councillor Watts, we talked about a community interest company to deliver affordable homes in this county as a council. It's never been taken forward. Why not? Because we haven't got the inspiration to do it. I don't know, I mean, I, I think we go around in circles and we end up with nothing. That's the problem with this council, nobody trusts us anymore, we're not to be trusted. And the last three years, I've got to say, it has not been good. So today, I will not support this plan unless we go away and we do some amendments to it. And if we bring them amendments back, I would wholeheartedly support this plan. But at the moment, what I've heard, I cannot support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Mayby, and I've got councillor here, and then we'll take a break. And I'm, that might well be the last speakers, but we'll, we'll see who's, who wants to say anything after that.
Thank you, Chair. As you would expect, I've had a particular focus on the environmental aspects of new development throughout the development of this plan. I am a professional with more than thirty years' experience of working on sustainability and energy efficient housing. I won't go into all my qualifications, but you can check them on LinkedIn if you wish. So I do come with professional experience to this role. Not just through a wish to be grandstanding in politics, so I just wanted to make that point. I don't, however, carry councillor Howard's cynicism. I know things are very difficult. But I very much echo councillor Eason's point that he made, and I found that very inspirational. That in spite of the fact that things are difficult and we can't get them all right at the same time, we cannot give up fighting for that vision, for that better future, for affordable, sustainable housing, as well as affordable, sustainable transport, as well as sufficient health and social care, et cetera. Even if we can't get them all at exactly the same time and tick those same boxes, and that's the difficult experience of coming into politics and realising just how little power we have directly. So we have to keep trying to do the right thing. Specifically, I do sympathise, I do sympathise with the fears voiced by opposition about poor development, having said that I don't share the cynicism. But I have to say that I think a lot of your fears are based on particularly awful developments that have happened in the past. And without putting too strong a political point on it, some of them have happened under conservative administrations with the best will in the world, because you were wanting to deliver to what you perceive to be the only drive of households to own their own homes, to have their two cars parked outside, to be able to access those shops by car, by road, and that's why we've ended up with the situation we have. And it's very difficult to retrofit active travel sites, as we've discovered, it's expensive and it's slow. We've achieved it in Monmouth, linking Monmouth Town Centre to Kingswood Gate Estate. With some opposition, I have to say, from some councillors opposite, but we've got there. And I can tell you, it takes a long time and a lot of money to do this. What I have felt, found very encouraging since I've been involved in this role and watched the LDP being developed and learnt from, from planners and particularly from councillor Griffiths about how this process works, is you can do it better, and that's what we're trying to do. And I have really enjoyed the way that this R L D P has been developed. I think it's something we can take real pride in. I'm comfortable that the environmental concerns that have been quite rightly raised and questioned by residents, that they have been addressed. And they will no doubt be further examined by the inspector. As councillor Griffiths has explained, all of those comments, all of the information provided will go through to the inspector, they've not been ignored. They have been listened to, and they will go through to the inspector, and that is the process we have, however bureaucratic and slow and frustrating that must feel. The preferred sites also, they were taken through a co-creation exercise with the Design Commission for Wales, which was interesting, with all the expert officers, as well as cabinet members on green infrastructure, on ecology, on habitat, on active travel, as looking at all of those issues, as well as the social and demographic needs and, and the visual impacts. So we really did work hard to try and get the master plan as good as possible to go into this plan. And then, as people have explained, when those individual sites are, come through to being applied for planning commission, then all of those other details will be looked at again and in more detail. I'm comfortable with that. Just a couple of things around that, on the zero, on the carbon emissions. It's been really important, and we've, we've spent a lot of time looking at how we can make sure there's a net zero carbon. That is progressive, that's more than standard building regulations, that will be showing a good role model. It will make Monmouth, Monmouthshire, Chepstow, Monmouth, Abogavenny, really good case studies and shining examples. It's something we can be really proud of achieving, and that means high levels of energy efficiency, as well as solar generation. So making them net zero carbon is a big thing to do, and it will make them better, more comfortable, cheaper homes to live in as well. I do think that although people aspire to having their own homes, I think that actually by saying that's the only thing we're actually dismissing and ignoring all of those households who simply can't afford their own homes in Monmouthshire. That's why the social housing is just so important. We have an incredibly difficult situation in terms of the cost of private renting, and people are unable to afford that, and the demographic imbalance, which is accelerating. We've got to do something about that, and this is really our best shot, trying to go as far as we can on the social housing proportions within the viability constraints. And that's been a really key part of what we've been trying to do here. On the flood risk, I've learned a lot about that in this role, as you can imagine, I didn't understand about it before. The sustainable drainage systems, there's been a move forward on this, that not only are sustainable urban drainage systems required, but also developers in future will have to put forward maintenance plans which have to be approved by council. And I think that's a real step forward, even in relation to estates that have been built relatively recently. So we're learning and improving on those things. On water quality, Monmouth, as well as other areas, as well as Abogavenny, have had phosphate stripping. Sorry, the phosphate stripping is coming in Abogavenny, it's already been applied in Monmouth site, which has released the, the ability to build homes there. But we're still taking the precautionary principle as a planning authority in that we are insisting on nutrient neutrality, on, in, it's difficult to say, nutrient neutrality in, in new planning developments in new housing, which is extra careful in spite of the fact that phosphate stripping has been put on. We've also know, we've had confirmation from Welsh Water, that there is sufficient water supply. So those concerns have been considered and addressed. And the thing on the bats, which I do, I know how people feel about that, I feel like that too. I'm lucky enough to live somewhere with dark skies. And there's loads of bats, the bats and the owls are the best bit of my winter evenings, actually. Going out and hearing owls, and in the summer, the bats as well. And what has been really important now, and we've had this from our own ecologist, as well as confirmed by the independent study that was done by A E Com, that yes, we have wonderful species of bats in the Monmouth preferred site in Leesbrook. That is not atypical of that area of Monmouthshire, of our lovely dark skies, Monmouthshire. It's not atypical. And actually, the foraging potential for those bats will not be damaged too much. It's, it's considered that it's not going to damage those species in the Leesbrook site, and no other sites in the whole of that area would be better, unfortunately. Everything we do, everything we do has some environmental impact. And I think the responsible way for a public authority to, to behave is to mitigate environmental impact as much as possible, not to pretend that there's no environmental impact. I was a little bit taken aback by councillor Pavia's comments, someone who I usually respect all of his interventions, but he seems to be keener on concreting over land to build motorways than he does to build housing. And I mention that, again, not to ignore the importance of the transport issues, which are really difficult, and we're working on them as hard as we possibly can. I'm mentioning that because I do think you have to be realistic, that there is some environmental, environmental impact, we've got to mitigate it as much as possible. But finally, on the transport point, the numbers of, of additional cars that would come from this housing that's being proposed is minuscule compared sadly to the number of cars that belt down our A roads every single day. And you will hardly notice it. That doesn't, that's a bit of a, you know, it doesn't sound a particularly encouraging thing to say, but I think it's awful to think we will starve our communities of affordable housing, because we're unfortunate enough to, to live next to a strategic road network with lots of transport on it. And the idea that we would just become little quiet dormitory towns with a horrible demographic imbalance, because we can't cope with the idea of adding a few cars to the thousands that go down those roads already, is really shooting ourselves in the feet. So I just wanted to final, finally say, I, I think what councillor Howell said is, is absolutely key for me, which is are we thinking of freezing our communities or protecting them? I don't want to freeze them. I want to protect them by developing as well as possible, and I think that's what this plan tries to do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take councillor Keir, and then we'll take a break.
Thanks very much, Chair. My, my wonderful late father taught me many a fine lesson in my younger days, and I hope I listened well enough for him to, to speak coherently today. "Don't drink from a fire hose, son" was one of those such lessons. Now, of course, that was metaphorically speaking, but it's a lesson recalled when presented with seventeen thousand documents to assess as part of this R L D B process in a limited time. The size of this task, as we all know, has been enormous, and I have ten minutes today to summarise and of course, the three years of discussions that we have had. I wanted to place on record my, my views and cover three areas to give my summarised position on the process, the R L D P plan as a whole for Monmouthshire, and indeed my ward. With regards to the process, I respectfully thank all the officers who are here, who have been involved in the monumental task and process, particularly in collating and responding in detail to the consultation comments, over four thousand, as we've heard from colleagues here today. And indeed, so great with the number of the responses that the meeting has been delayed by three months. I thank Craig O'Connor and his predecessor Mark Han for their contributions to my questions and deliberations, it is appreciated. And I note the input of councillor Griffiths as cabinet member and commend him for the presentations that he's made today. And I know that the process alone will have been a challenge for him, and particularly with summing up as it comes. I have expressed concerns from the outset that we are voting on one plan and not individual sites. In my own ward, there are two sites, Little Millinask. If I were to be persuaded about the merits of one and the opposite of the other, I am torn on how I vote. And I do respect the detailed diligence of the officers who've been involved with the collation of this plan. And I know that it's taken many, many weeks and, and months to, to put all this together. With regards to the R L D P as a whole, there are many plans, indeed, as some of my colleagues here have said today, that we support. I have already mentioned the enormous size of this plan and report that's been put together. And I've admired the detail and the passion my colleagues this side of the chamber have gone into. But who am I to argue against their objections to the sites in their particular ward? Indeed, my colleague councillor Newell here has spoken about the Dixton Road. Who am I to tell him that he is, he is wrong and I am, I am right? And likewise, respectfully, I've heard the comments and the arguments put forward by colleagues opposite, and I respect those views. Here in this chamber, I've consistently said that at times we will agree to disagree, and that's my approach to, to politics here. I respect the main aims of the affordable housing, absolutely. But councillor Griffiths of, with regards to fifty fifty, and councillor Griffiths knows well of my professional views, that that fifty fifty split, for me, is a challenge too far. I'm not persuaded by parts of the viability assessments that that will, will work. The plan suggests fifty fifty or nothing, and councillor Griffiths confirms this today. My concerns are, when pressures come for housing, and we are talking about implementation of this, which will be after this council changes in twenty twenty seven, the developers, and I've worked with them a long time, I'm sure will have the upper hand in negotiations. So in terms of saying, you need housing, we are not going to put the fifty fifty. So I'm not persuaded by councillor Griffiths with your argument on the sustainability. The planning committee from twenty twenty seven is going to change and may not have the same passion that this current planning committee has. There is no doubt in my mind that section one oh six contributions will lessen, and the infrastructure across Monmouthshire as a result will be less. Indeed, it could well be argued that the fifty percent, the other fifty percent in relation to commercial housing is likely to be more expensive to balance the lower profitability of the affordable housing. And my experience of funding these for over ten years said that is a real reality. So you could be pushing the cost of housing in Monmouthshire even higher for some areas. I absolutely agree, the need for options for increasing local employment is very valid. And, and I support that, but I don't believe, as councillor John said earlier, that this is balanced across the county. I absolutely admire and support the need for carbon zero homes. After all, that's what my day job is, I fund those, so I'm absolutely in favour of it. The natural environment and biodiversity is one that we do need to protect, and I take councillor Mayby's, councillor Mayby's views on that. As is the need for us to protect the character of our communities. I do have concerns that where there have been four thousand responses, of which the majority appear to have been objections. So my ward, residents and businesses have a, a regular habit of reminding us why and who sent us here to this chamber. "Do your job and represent us" was one such message I received last week. So there's been many approaches on this R L D P. And I have organised three public meetings, I've listened to the debates and votes, us town council and Clambadig Community Council, I've knocked on doors next to the sites, the canvas views, as well as, you know, the usual face to face meetings that we do have as, as members in our communities. I'm grateful to my colleagues on this side of the chamber who've taken interest in the sites in my ward, and indeed, I, I know I've had no such contact from, from the other side, and indeed, I did wonder whether I should print out some maps to actually point out where they are. Concerns have been expressed about flooding from surface water on both sites from the Berthen Group and the Olway, as well as the Asc backing up. And I note that the, the SUDS planning for Burriam Gate One, as we called it, have proved to be insufficient when we saw flooding in May twenty three. A surface water has to go somewhere, and indeed, plans may be developed on Burriam Gate Two, as we call it, from the hills, and then they flow downstream into the lower lying area of Privy Gardens, which flooded for the first time since nineteen sixty eight in November twenty four. There are concerns about the lack of public transport and lack of infrastructure. And I certainly, I don't agree with officers' assessment that the Burriam Gate Two site is within fifteen minute walks of the centre of Asc. Residents in Castle Oak, which is closer, say that they take the car. I've had discussions with the GP surgery and the dentist. On the former, since the closure of the other GP surgery, there's now a waiting list for the first time with, with the current houses. So the clinical and space pressures exist. Expansion physically is a business decision and involves a risk in, in borrowing money to extend it. And I don't believe our GPs should be pressurised into making such business decisions because of a plan enforced on them by MCC. The dentist says that he is only taking private patients, no NHS. So does that mean that residents who potentially may be occupying affordable housing in Asc means that they have to travel to go to see a dentist or indeed take out private and dental insurance? The comments supporting affordable housing also refer to, could we say that it's only available to Asc residents or connections with them? And I don't believe we can do that. To me, this feels like a bound to boiling down to a matter of opinions. I commend my colleague councillor Howells for his survey and the comments recorded, which I've looked at in detail, are a good reflection of the matters in Asc. I think we agree on that, I don't think there's any difference there. But I have to say is that you've drawn different statistical conclusions from it. For example, you refer to an overwhelming response at 50 and 45, but in Little Mill, 25 out of 35 respondents were against the proposals. And you said in your submission to this process in December 24 that you would support the majority. My assessment of those numbers says that there is not greater than 50% in favour of the conclusion that you have reached.
Half a minute, councillor.
Thank you. So to summarise, on a Monmouthshire basis, am I to ignore the detailed comments of my colleagues who represent other wards? Am I, on a local basis, to ask myself as a representative of the communities of Clambatic and Asc Ward, am I to ignore the opposition of us Town Council, Clambatic Community Council, Asc Civic Society, the former head of planning of MCC, the concerns of GP Surgery, the dentist, the residents who were flooded in May 23? And of course, the representations made to residents, by residents, to me and the business group that I chair? I've carefully listened, I've tried my best noting the time available to digest and soak in the 17,000 pages. I've ignored my personal views. I'm not seeking electoral advantage, I want to represent and do the right thing for Asc. I have concluded, Chair, that such views, if I made this one sentence, I have concluded that such views and representations of the communities have not persuaded me that the plan is the right one for me to vote on today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Right, we'll take a 15-minute break. Now, depending on how many people wish to speak and how many new points there are, it might be possible to go straight into councillor Griffiths's summing up and a vote after that, but we'll play that up by here a bit, okay? All right, 15 minutes, so back at 5:47. Yeah, I know, we've got three more, yeah. Yeah, I've got them, yeah.
We're on the ball here.
Right, everybody, I think we are ready. I've got three hands up at the moment, so the sequence will be... Oh, hang on, councillor Taylor, then councillor Brocklesby, and councillor Sandals. Okay, councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. A number of colleagues have spoken about this, but I genuinely think the point about consultation is extremely important. I took part in the last plan process, or to the tail end of it, if you like. I genuinely thought this process would be different, but I think I was wrong. We hear a reasonable amount of rhetoric about this being a listening county. But 4,000 representations from 956 individual respondents suggests a different story, when there are no significant substantial or material changes. I personally don't find that reasonable. Good consultation in statutory decision-making should be the cornerstone of democratic governance, and should empower residents. Does this consultation amount to meaningful participation in a process? I can't say that it feels very meaningful to me. Also, do we think that the consultation followed consultation principles? In particular, that consultation took place when proposals are still at a formative change, and the bodies have an open mind, and that their responses have been conscientiously taken into account. What do you think those 956 respondents are thinking right now? Just wondered. On a personal level, as I always do, I have responded to several different parts of the plan process consultation. And this has elicited no consultation or change at all. Indeed, as has been mentioned, in response to this issue of consultation which was brought up in scrutiny, we are told, well, this is just the Welsh Government process. I believe that was the response that we got to that question. I don't think that's good enough. The process is clearly flawed, if that is. We are expecting people to read all of those pages, to respond, and then to have no real outcome from their efforts. Let's be clear, I am not opposed to development per se. Having been an elected member for some while, I think I have a much better appreciation of how good development can enhance a community. However, I think this plan lacks balance, and does not consider the fact that Monmashe does not exist in a vacuum. Indeed, in a vacuum, and neither does a given development, so any single development, or wider land use. The cabinet member reflected that Mego with Endy has suffered from overdevelopment. This is true. Successive administrations, over a very long time, have made poor decisions in relation to Mego with Endy. Indeed, the additional site at Vinegar Hill was imposed by the Welsh Government during the last examination process. Within Sevenside, during the previous plan period, I think there was an increase in its proportion of growth towards about 13%. It was circa twice what the rest of the county was. The cabinet members suggesting that no new housing development in this plan period is a triumph. Once again, good, reasonable, and proportionate development can add value. However, given that this plan only runs to 2033, it probably feels more like a stay of execution, because the proposals from the last plan period are only just being developed. Indeed, let's take Vinegar Hill, the one added by the Welsh Government in their wisdom during this very extensive plan examination process. That couldn't be brought forward because there were significant sustainable drainage issues. So it's been brought forward now, but not without a significant additional investment of funds. So when we say that we'll go to the inspectors for their wisdom, I have to say I can't give you a great deal of confidence in that process. Whilst there are no new housing sites, as we've mentioned in Mego with Endy, there are 770 new homes proposed for Port Skewett, new homes proposed in Coent, and as I just mentioned, we don't exist in a vacuum. Let us not forget the significant developments at Glanllin. Cumulative development has an impact on residents and infrastructure. The homes in Port Skewett are proposed without the provision for a GP surgery or a contribution towards the extension of Greyhill, for example. I note that in the Infrastructure Delivery Plan background document, it talks about the council having engaged with an RMBF throughout the RLDP process. However, this certainly didn't appear to be the case when we were, as councillor Eason mentioned, talking about the fact that they were closing mega surgery in the afternoon. I do note now that the Health Board did respond, and in their response, they specifically note that the proposed housing developments and associated population growth will lead to further pressure on primary care and community health services, including GP practices, NHS dentistry, and pharmacy services. The Health Board also acknowledged the concerns raised about pressure on Greyhill Surgery, which is the only GP practice in the locality and already has over 20,000 registered patients. Probably, though, my most significant concern in this particular plan is the employment allocation. Now, I'm not going to split hairs with the cabinet member, but out of 57 hectares, 24 are in Mego, six in Caldercut, and now if I add that together, and my mouth's not particularly brilliant, that's over 50%, but, you know, we can argue about the detail later. I think this plan fails to play any due regard to the Gwent levels and to the Mego and Land of Eni triple SI in respect of the employment land proposed. The cumulative impact and failure to protect infrastructure on the levels in favour of further development on land allocated for employment such as Mego Brewery is inconsistent with the principles of nature conservation and the declaration of a climate and nature emergency. The citing of an employment land allocation on or adjacent to the triple SI, I think, is in direct conflict with Planning Policy Wales 12.6, or whatever it is, about the improved protection of the levels. I do not accept and find disingenuous the comments from the cabinet member that these are simply role-oversights. I appreciate some of them have been development, but not all at all. And the comment that this will come out of the wash in the planning process, I do not buy either. Having seen the latest planning appeal on the levels for a wind turbine, which this council refused, but PDU agreed, I do not agree that this will be dealt with at the examination stage either. I've personally sat in the examination process and spent days listening to representations from developers and the inspector, and I can tell you, it did not give me any confidence in the process. So I don't believe that it will give me greater confidence to know that this plan may go forward and then be examined. And then furthermore, the planning process will attend to any inconsistencies or issues. Industrial development of this nature on a natural or semi-natural habitat should only be permitted under extreme circumstances, and only if remediation greatly exceeds the losses caused by the development. I do not see that in the employment land allocated and the allocations already developed on the triple SI and adjacent to it. I think the two mega sites conflicts significantly with this criteria. It is essential that every effort is made to prevent the further destruction of the levels. Designated such a significant proportion of economic development on carbon sinkland is unacceptable, in my view, and demonstrates the council's lack of a vision in this area. The idea of a waste management site on or adjacent to the triple SI, which I'm told will all come out in the wash with the planning process, is also extremely concerning. I'm also concerned about the impact on the ancient settlement of Land of Eni and the wider landscape character of the Gwent levels. I'm also particularly concerned that whilst we talk about...
Half a minute, please, councillor.
Thank you. Areas of amenity importance. The plan does not recognise the importance of amenity land in some areas of Mego with Endy, and in my view, does not protect them from development. Areas on the outskirts of Mego with Endy are viewed by officers as not having high recreational value. It should be remembered that in October 2023, an e-petition around green space in Mego with Endy garnered 1,256 signatures, a significant proportion of the local population. Finally, a point about other infrastructure. When we discussed the preferred strategy, I naturally responded, and we're all concerned about infrastructure. Let me put my cards on the table. Having had the privilege of representing Mego for 13 years, local people are very sceptical of the approach of, well, we'll build it and the infrastructure will follow. We certainly don't believe that in Mego with Endy.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Brocklesby.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, colleagues, residents, both in the chamber, and thank you for staying so long for this important debate, and those online. Today, I will be voting in favour of submitting the deposit replacement local development plan to the Planning Inspectorate for independent assessment. I want to acknowledge the work that has gone into this. Yes, there has been, over the last three-plus years, a huge amount of work to deal with the revision of the planning for the replacement LDP, which started in the previous administration. It's been seven long years in the making. And as has been alluded to by other councillors, there's been a lot of officer time, and officers have passed on to other jobs while this has been processed. It has also involved processes and phases of consultation over that period. And as councillor Griffith said, changes have been made, responses were made to local people in the last attempt to pass a replacement local development plan. I don't share the cynicism of colleagues in the chamber. I do believe there will be an independent assessment, and I do also believe that we will respect and abide by that when it comes back to council in 2026. However, let me begin by acknowledging the concerns and frustrations expressed by so many residents and colleagues across the chamber. We hear them. All of us do. One thing that I've learnt over this period is the whole planning process is deeply, deeply frustrating. It is a series of steps and phases which our officers and which as a council, we are required by law to go through. The responsibility to respond to the representations lies with the Planning Inspectorate. We were required to respond to each and every one representation made to the council. But we then could not bring those responses back to council and start to think through, through scrutiny and in other ways, how we could mitigate against those concerns. We had to add them to the 17,000 pages. As a dyslexic, I absolutely share your frustration at having to read that much, but we had to do that. So the planning inspector was aware of who had concerns, who had objections, and who was in support. We couldn't collate it. We couldn't cut and paste. That's what we had to do, and we did. As I said, this version of the replacement LDP has now been three years in the making. It represents a bold, forward-thinking vision for land development and management in Monmashe. I believe it's innovative, hopeful, and above all, sustainable. At its heart lies our council's core purpose, to become a fairer and zero-carbon county. This plan supports wellbeing, health, and dignity for everyone at every stage in life. It's rooted in our values and shaped by our aspirations for a better future, not just for the few, but for all of us. Many of our colleagues have spoken passionately about the positive transformative impact affordable housing will have on individuals, communities, and our landscape. I agree wholeheartedly. I'm not going to repeat their arguments. Instead, what I'd like to do is share a story representative of so many people who have spoken to me about their frustrations of not being able to call somewhere in Monmashe their home. They speak of cramped living conditions while saving for a deposit, of the grief of being separated by their loved ones, and of the mental toll of rental uncertainty. That is the reality behind the housing crisis which affects everyone. It is a crisis for the whole of the UK. The couple I want to tell you about, they live in South Monmashe, and both are working. They desperately want to remain in the community where they grew up, in close contact with their friends and family. That's not a bold ambition, colleagues. That's a basic human hope and human right. What one of them said to me is, we just want a two-bedroom house. Something we can afford, not just for social rent, but something maybe we can buy. They currently live with his mum. It's cheaper than renting, and the house next door is rented out for £1,000 a month, well beyond their reach. So they save the pennies, they save what they can, wanting to move up the housing list, or for a home they can afford, whether through shared equity or buying or renting that's fair, where they're not having to second-guess whether the rent will be put up or they'll be asked to leave. And they know they're not a priority. What's more, they say others are more deserving than us. We understand that. So they wait. They wait in limbo, sticking with it, hoping that one day something will change. Well, let me tell you, colleagues, it won't change unless we take bold action, and that's what we are going to do. This replacement local development plan sets out the radical steps needed to give this couple and so many others, and let's call them Mary and Joseph, a home where they can afford to live. Let's not kick that can down the road for another administration to deal with. Let's not leave Mary and Joseph and every other person caught up in a crisis that is not of their making, waiting seven more years. waiting seven more years in the forlorn hope that something might change. Because it won't unless we take action. So join me in voting through the draft deposit plan. Thank you colleagues.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Sandals please.
Diol Gadaireid. This plan has generated a great deal of interest and debate and that's understandable. It's a huge project that's taken many years, one that will shape how and where people live, work and grow in Monmouthshire for decades to come. I recognise there are many views in this chamber and across our communities. But I believe it's vital that we pass this plan today, not just to meet housing targets, but to secure the future of our young people and our communities. For me, this isn't about numbers on a page or plots on a map, it's about real people and real lives. It's about our foster carers, our care leavers and the young people who've already experienced so much loss and trauma in their early years, yet are trying to build stable, independent lives here in Monmouthshire. As members, we are all corporate parents and with that comes a shared responsibility to care for, protect and provide for the children and young people who are in our care. As a member of the corporate parenting panel, I regularly meet with care leavers and every time one issue comes up above all others, housing. They tell us how difficult it is to find somewhere affordable and stable to live. Too often they're placed in neighbouring counties, far away from the friendships, schools, jobs and support networks they've built here in Monmouthshire. That's not independence they deserve, that's isolation, just when they are trying to take their first steps into adulthood. I also meet regularly with foster carer support groups and time and again I hear the same concern. The transition to independence is one of the biggest worries they face. In Wales, we're fortunate to have a system that allows young people who are in education to stay with their foster carers until they're twenty five. But what then? What happens when education ends and they're ready to move on? Where do they go if they can't afford to stay in their community? Let me tell you about a young man, I won't say his name, he's nineteen, he's doing an apprenticeship, he's working hard, he's contributing to his community and he desperately wants to stay in the town in Monmouthshire that he grew up in with his foster carers, but he can't find anywhere affordable to live. And there's a foster carer who wrote to me about her two young care leavers, one in employment, the other with additional learning needs. Both are ready to take the next steps in their lives, but neither can see a future for themselves here because of the cost of housing. She asked me plainly, Angela, where do they go? These are not isolated cases, these are young people who've been raised here, who've gone to our schools, who've built friendship, found jobs and created their lives here. And yet when adulthood comes, the doors to Monmouthshire start to close on them. As a foster parent myself, I think about my own young person who's now at university. She's doing so well and like any parent, I'm proud of her. But I find myself asking, when she finishes her studies, where is she going to be able to live? Will she be priced out of the very community that helped her grow? This R L D P offers a chance to change that story. It promises one thousand affordable new homes and that's not just a figure. That's one thousand chances for stability, for independence and belonging. We have to make sure that those homes are truly affordable and accessible to people who need the most, especially our young people, our care leavers and those on modest incomes who want to stay close to their families, their jobs and their support networks. Passing this plan today is more than about development, it's about inclusion, fairness and future. It's about making sure that Monmouthshire remains a place where people of all backgrounds can put down roots and build their lives, not just those who can afford high market prices. We can't keep losing our young people because there's nowhere for them to live. We can't talk about opportunity and growth if the next generation can't afford to stay here. So today I'm asking members to look beyond the detail and see the human side of this decision. Let's pass this R L D P not because it's easy or perfect, but because it gives us a framework to do better for the people who need us most. Let's build a Monmouthshire where everyone, including our foster carers, our care leavers and our young people, can see a future for themselves. And let's work together across parties, across wards to make sure this plan delivers on its promise. Because if we get this right, we'll be investing not just in homes, but in hope, community and the next generation of Monmouthshire. Diol.
Afternoon or evening or, thank you ever so much for all the officers and all the hard work that's gone in to get to this stage. I've listened this afternoon with great interest and wondering all sorts of things. I've been making notes and I'm wondering lots of things that have gone through my head and one of the things that I've just pulled some things out. Starting first off with the opening comments, today I bring to you the results of the consultation. Well, thank you very much, but our residents don't feel heard. And I know we are all saying, or the other side are saying, that they will be heard. But the residents don't feel heard. At the honour position of chairing place, I have to say they didn't feel heard and that's the reason why they were there in so many numbers and I'm pleased they were there in so many numbers. I welcome them and I hope that they felt that that situation they were heard. And the gentleman from councillor Jones's ward, he was so moving to say that he didn't even know what was happening and what would do to his farm and his livelihood. There were many comments made during that meeting, which was very long. In point of fact, I did say it was longer than this one if memory serves, we're at four hours and forty minutes and we went on for six hours. So in that meeting, there was so much discussed. And one of the things that now brings to my mind, and I keep coming back to it, is great, we want affordable housing. Yes, we want more houses. Yes, we get that. Yes, we need that. But affordable housing at fifty percent, great, is it doable? And then I hear again from the lecturers earlier on this afternoon, that we will guarantee it will be. And if it isn't, they won't get planning. Now I see the nod there and I thank you, but how much guarantee will there really be? Because the house builders will have the golden hand, they will. It's as simple as that. And when we go to environmental issues, and I've heard councillor Maybe, and I thank you for comments. But we talk about environmental issues, they're there but they're gone and yet on other occasions, they're the best thing and the worst thing and they're the everything. Yet today, we seem to be pushing them aside a little. So I personally am involved with the site in Lees Brook Lane. And I can personally say that I, at the very original part of this, said, why isn't it a green wedge? I feel as you come down into Wales from out of the Midlands, as you come down the A four four nine or the A forty, whichever way you prefer to say it, you actually look and you see a green fields and you think, they haven't built on that one? Wow! Whereas pretty much everywhere else I go in the country, you see houses being built up like everywhere, literally everywhere you go, the M five corridor, houses everywhere. And you come to Monmouth and you think they haven't built on that, what a lovely place this must be. Monmouth Town Council have voted against this. So that comes to mind something else I put down. So does it mean that the community councils and the town councils, who have also been in communication about this, do they not count? Because trust me, they feel they don't count. And that upsets them. On an agenda item I've just read yesterday for another committee, community council I sit on, it actually said, do we feel that we are being heard from M C C? And that wasn't Monmouth, that was external of Monmouth. So I raise that question. People don't feel like they are being respected. And as someone else said, and I've got to be honest, so many comments today, I can't say who said that, that they pay our wages. I think it was Chris, but they pay our wages. They do. They put us here. And yes, we do need to listen to them. And yes, we do need to build houses, but we need to build, as we've all been saying, the right houses in the right places. On more than one occasion, I have asked and I'll keep asking because I strongly believe this is not as straightforward as it sounds. An affordable house is affordable to whom? It is only affordable if you can afford it. And that's a simple fact. And apparently when I've pushed, an affordable house is two hundred and fifty thousand pounds. So I asked my colleagues to my left, how much money does someone have to earn to be able to afford an affordable house? And the answer was the joint income, supposedly if it's joint, has to have fifty thousand pounds. So then you go, okay, so where are the jobs to support that? Where are the jobs to support that? So we're going to give them ground to have buildings for jobs. So we're going to have that area for jobs, i.e. silkbusters, mandrings stone and etcetera. Well, that sounds great and I worship hearing all of those things. I really do. I think that's brilliant. But are the jobs really there at the moment? Yes, they will come? No, they won't come. Who knows? We don't know. I worry about that. We've also commented today, councillor Garrett I think said that we've had the active travel and councillor Maybe said, we've got the active travel from the bottom end of Monmouth. Yes, we have. And now we're going to build houses where there isn't any active travel and take away the green wedge. Oh, and I haven't even got that one yet, bats. Now, a triple S I, and I'm lucky enough to part own a triple S I, so I know a bit about them and have done for many years, is that they are sacrosanct. You can't just do things to them. But the bats, and there are thirteen species, on bats associated to Monmouth Lees Brook Lane. And councillor Maybe turned and said, it's atypical that the others, no, it's not. But if you remove, if you remove that ground from their habitat, it is gone. It's as simple as that. It's gone. Do we not care? Apparently we don't. I struggle with this and let alone when we talk about traffic and what it would do to Monmouth, because Monmouth will turn into the Chepstow, someone else has said that earlier on. Monmouth will turn into Chepstow. And anybody that knows what it's like to get through Chepstow will know, you don't go to Chepstow unless you absolutely have to on a chosen rush hour. I was going to say rush hour. I'm referring to the traffic as you well know, sir. Okay, it's hard work to get through it. So other councillors have brought that in, we need to do something about the infrastructure there. And on the other side earlier on, I heard someone, I think it was, I'm not quite sure who said it, about the traffic is not something we really want. Well, it's not what we really want, it's what we're getting. Because all these jobs are going to be commuters' jobs, not all of them, we hope obviously, but they're going to be a huge element of commuting. And when we talk about not having access onto the M forty eight, that's Sutra. Sutra is run, is it not, by Welsh Government? You've got to think about the whole thing. When we talk about consulting to our residents, four thousand, four thousand people took the effort to respond. And when you knock at doors, we all do, I hope. When we not, I'm sorry, am I boring people? Councillor Cook, councillor Cook, please. I would, but I'd like some respect, please. Right, thank you. I don't often stand up and say a lot, but I feel so strongly about this, that we're not hearing our residents properly. Not, it's good to say we want to build houses, absolutely, we're not against that. What we're against is not thought. So please, I ask everybody to consider what the effects will be as it goes forward. And that has me done. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Lucas. Are there any more hands? Speak now or forever hold your peace. I think we're done. Yeah, okay. So we'll move straight into the summing up. So councillor Brocklesby, are you trying to?
Yes, please. Before councillor Griffith starts summing up, I would like, when the vote comes, to request a recorded vote.
Right, okay. Can I see those in favour?
I'll leave it to you councillor John, because you always say it with such panache.
We have a rare outbreak of unanimity. Well, I tell you what, can I see all those in favour of a recorded vote? I think that's enough.
Thanks very much and thanks, I really do mean it when I say thanks everyone for their contribution. I know they've not all been uniformly supportive of proposals that I've met made. But one of my deepest political convictions is the belief in local councils, local representation. And the role that you all play in representing your constituents, your wards, I think is fundamental to any healthy democracy and anyone who moves to diminish that is on a very dangerous path. So I respect this process, I respect everything that's been said. It doesn't mean that we all agree, like must be the case. In common thing, again, I won't be agreeing with everything. Richard John, councillor John, began the debate with a suggestion that somehow this plan was designed to appease Welsh Government, was designed to meet some Welsh Government target. Actually, I think most of you know, the direct opposite was the truth. The Welsh Government in twenty twenty one sent back a set of proposals from this council. Proposals for well near four thousand further houses in a new plan period with the suggestion or with the argument that Monmouthshire needed no new housing in the coming plan period. None. Now I could have, my colleagues could have, accepted that. I would have had a far easier last three years if I had accepted that. No candidate sites, no appraisals, no public meetings to listen to this, listen to that. Could have had a rollover plan with no new sites. Within a few months of taking on the role and looking around at the county and listening, I came to the firm conviction that Welsh Government was simply wrong. It had sadly, and these are my colleagues, my Labour colleagues, people I've worked for. They had a misconception of Monmouth, of Monmouthshire, a misconception that that was some fringe authority with no significant role to play in the future of Wales or the region, with no significant economic role to play. And I faced up to that and said, we have a pivotal role to play. We have a very significant future socially and economically in the region and across the region into England. Let us play it. And in order to play it, we need a measured degree of development which needs to be affordable housing led. Those arguments were strongly put and only then were we able to proceed with this plan. So the notion that has been imposed on this administration, on this authority, is actually the opposite of the truth. We had to argue for it. And I'm pleased that we did so successfully. And I hope at the end of this afternoon, I'll get the support of the council in having done so. Another thing that Welsh Government has got wrong is the design of the plan process. Going out to consultation in a system whereby you're supposed to have already made all the changes that need to be made and further change comes from the inspectorate is not a good system. Correcting some of the reports, we didn't get four thousand responses. Correcting some of the reports, we didn't get 4,000 respondents, we had 1,200 respondents. But we changed deliberately the response process. The template was to allow one respondent to make only one comment. We deliberately changed that and invited them to make multiple comments, hence the 1,200 translated to 4,000 responses. I think that should have happened earlier in the process, and I think we should have been able to have a more considered response within the council before going to the inspectorate. If we had done that, and we weren't able to in this case, we would have had a quandary. Well, I listened to some of the comments today. I've heard from councillor Pavia, well, the plan is all right, but let's exclude Chepstow. From councillor Newell, the plan is all right, but let's exclude Dicton Road. Councillor Dimmock, the plan is all right, but let's exclude Port Scuit. So if we'd had the flexibility to respond to everything we heard, I wonder if we'd have had a plan left to submit. It would have been a very difficult process. Moving on to some more specifics, I listened with interest to councillor Penny Jones and the issue of the Mr Morgan, who's a tenant of MCC in Raglan. I was impressed and moved by his contribution in the scrutiny committee as everyone else. I was not aware of the background, perhaps I should have been, but I wasn't. The designation of this site, it turns out, as, as I've delved into the background, the designation of this site as a candidate site for solar generation went back to 2020. It wasn't this administration, it's a shared project across administrations, that that should be a candidate site for regeneration. I was taken aback by the fact that although we had a candidate site, we didn't have an agreed way forward with the tenant farmer. The commitment, and you can see the officers looking worried as I use that word, the commitment that I want to take today is that should you pass this plan, we will work with that tenancy to ensure that the manner in which we take forward this regeneration, should we choose to do so, will be done in partnership with that tenant and will result in any generation, should it take place there, being consistent with the viability of that farm. The fact that it's in the plan does not mean that the landowner, that's us, is forced to make an application. We should make an application only when we've come to a resolution with that tenant farmer. And if there are alternatives available, we will have the power to make applications on that alternate land. So I was as taken aback as any, and that's the commitment that I make in taking that forward. The... It, it's, I'm going to refer to councillor Taylor's contribution, which has many parts, I won't be able to cover them all. The suggestion councillor Taylor feels she's had no influence over this plan, it certainly doesn't accord, I have to say, with my experience. When I was first elected, I walked the length and breadth of mega, and indeed Andy, with you. I did the same with councillor Sandlers, Sandals and councillor Crook. I received a common message from all those local councillors. What I heard and what I saw was that the rate of development in that area over a period of decades, in my view, and my professional colleagues won't agree with me necessarily, did not represent good planning. That developments had taken place in advance of any proper sense of place making, in advance of any, uh, community infrastructure worthy of the scale of development itself. And I made a commitment, I came back and made clear to the people that I was working with, that we would not be proposing further residential development in that area. And we kept that commitment. The influence was made, the propositions were made and were listened to. Councillor Taylor goes on to say, notwithstanding that successful influence, we are rolling forward the employment sites around mega. I make no apology for that. I am a huge enthusiast for the economic potential and the economic activity of this county, and that is the argument I impressed, sometimes on a disbelieving Welsh Government. And the activity that takes place around mega, that takes place in Monmouth, that takes place in New House Farm, is something that we should always be celebrating as a core of the future of Monmouthshire. Moving on to councillor Thomas Davis, a plan, but not this plan, I think was the message there. He rehearsed some of the history of, of, of housing. I'll share some of my history, if it's worth. I was born in rooms in Swansea, rooms, one room, mother, father, child, shade bathroom, etcetera, etcetera. We moved, not as a result of Harrod Macmillan Thomas, as a result of Nightbevan, we moved into the prefab in Aberavon. And when my sister was born, we moved into the Cornish house. And then when they were able, they bought a house. But they didn't support Margaret Thatcher's move to taking away the rung which had allowed them to progress in life. They didn't approve the selling off of council housing. They said that was the rung that got them started, that was the rung which should be available to future generations. And that's what I want to do again in Monmouthshire, with 33% social housing, social rented housing, providing that rung for families to find their way in the county and move along. A lot of comments made on viability. I covered them, I hoped, in the introduction, but obviously, my persuasive powers are limited. Councillor Davis, councillor Dimmock, councillor Keir, councillor Lucas, all claimed that they were unbelieving that we could deliver on the 50% affordable housing. The rules of the game have changed. The developers have had to make a viability submission assessed before their site is included. That's never happened before. Previously, they were included, and then the viability assessment came afterwards at the time of application and allowed the landowner to say, well, it may be in there, but it's, it's not viable, and we've seen the results of that. But it also needs a strong-minded local authority. I've looked back on the 21 document, and the 21 document, when it referred to affordability, said, now I'm quoting here, "We will look for opportunities for sites which are affordable housing-led." Well, you know, that sort of wording is an invitation to any development to say, well, you've looked at the opportunity and you haven't found it. This plan says it is a requirement, and if you can't meet the requirement, you will not be allowed to build. That changes the balance of advantage hugely, and my belief is that the profitability of development in Monmouth will be sufficient that they will come forward. And I quote, because Thomas, in particular, questioned the viability of Abigavenny East, and it relates to this question of section 106 and contributions, that, one, they won't be viable, and two, that the section 106 contributions will disappear in front of your, your eyes. The site promoter in Abigavenny East happens to be Monmouthshire Housing Association. We are working closely with them, we will continue to work closely with them. They've submitted their viability assessment, and they are able to do the 50% affordable housing, the 100, they're very keen on the 100%, zero carbon. The puzzle, as you're all aware, in Abigavenny East, to make it part of the town, you need crossings over the railway, over the 465 into town. Once you've done that, you've got an exciting integral part of the town, the urban environment expands. They have, and we will be able to share it in due course, not because it's unavailable, I'll just find the opportunity to share it, they have commissioned a design and costings of the bridges, bridge to the station, bridge to Fers Road into Abigavenny. The costings are, to provide those two crossings, £5 million. And it is within their viability assessment that they can make the £5 million contribution. So this notion that there is no section 106 left over is actually disproved, very substantial contribution to the necessary infrastructure consequential on that development. We'll move on. The word's been used at least twice in our meetings, that our new developments will be soulless, because they're new. Councillor Newell referred to a soulless development on the edge of Monmouth. My ambition is just so, so much higher than that. When we work closely with the developers, with the site promoters, put our own weight into this, our own ability to accept or reject planning applications, we will put soul into these developments. That must be an ambition that we share, and it can be achieved if we're not so pessimistic from the beginning. The suggestion that if you build homes, you inevitably increase the rate of commuting. I've already given my view that there are many local firms in this area who are very eager for us to provide local labour, the jobs, I believe, in many, many cases will grow as the labour force becomes more available. But I just want to add another thing to that, the amount of commuting that currently takes place, because we haven't got our own labour force, the amount of commuting into Monmouth, councillor Lucas made the point, because we don't have a homegrown care worker labour force for Monmouth. We don't have a labour force for the retail industry and other industries. So look to the commuting that's coming in to Colford, from Colford, look at the commuting that's coming from as far as Pontypool into a place like Monmouth, because we don't have the labour force for the activities which are already in the county. So I can, I say, we can reverse the argument and should reverse the argument there. Councillor Murphy raises, and it's a concern of his residents, and I respect that, that insofar as we have sites for gypsy Roma travellers, then there is a collection of such sites in and around Crick. Need to make them, I don't think I can wish them away, I don't, I can wish them elsewhere. The site that we've identified to the north or alongside Port Scuit site, every time I look at it, I believe that it's a good site, it's a site for seven pitches, we can make it a better site than the existing sites. Let's make a success of it, let's make it separate from, but not too separate from, the proposed development with walking routes in and around that site and into town. Am I pleased that it is so close to other sites? No. But if anyone, no, no, I don't know, reopen it, but I haven't been able to find another site. My last point, you're being very lenient, Chair. My last point relates to the very important debates that we've had about infrastructure. I, I do ask that you look again at appendix H in the deposit plan. The specific requirements of us as a planning authority is to make provision for infrastru- for the infrastructural impacts of the specific developments. It's not to solve all the infrastructure problems that we've got when we've got a large number of them. And I think we're living up to that expectation, we won't solve them all. I think councillor Pavia's contribution is along the lines that we've got highway infrastructure problems writ large in Chepstow, and until you solve that, you can't put 146 houses extra into the mix. That's actually not the expectation, the expectation is that we make provision for the 146 houses, which I believe that we have done, and we will do, because the specific impact of those 146 houses is that in order for them to have a lifestyle that I aspire for them, they need a very attractive, a very accessible, active travel route into the school in Bolwark and into local amenities. I'm working, you know, I'm working on the High Beach Roundabout, working group with Transport for Wales, with Welsh Government, frustrating process, Deb Hill-Howles will agree with me on that. But the bill, the, the one certainty is that that active travel route will be built into a new design for that roundabout. And I think as councillor Brown said, she wants infrastructure to be conditional. It is conditional in that respect. There will be no building on that site unless there is that active travel in place. But what we can't do is, what councillor Pavia wants, is to say, solve all the problems of the traffic coming from the Forest of Dean, all the problems of the traffic coming from, from Caldecot, and only then can you build. We can't do that, but we can have the specific active travel route for that site, and we will. And finally, finally, I thought councillor Eason took the approach to infrastructure, which I would take, and I think I'd like to persuade the council to reconcile itself too, we won't solve it. And there is no councillor here who gives me more earache than councillor Eason on couns- on infrastructure problems. But councillor Eason recognises that whilst that earache must continue and progress must be made on the M48, on the High Beach, on the B road, that the land use plan is not the means of solving it, and that we need to get on and provide the housing that we need, the jobs that we need, and we need to make progress with so much of those infrastructure problems through a separate route. I've never let before councillor Eason have the last word, but I'll leave it there today.
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, I was very lenient, but I, I was able to be lenient, because as I looked around the chamber, I, I could see that all around the chamber, you were giving, being given the respect to, to deal with the, the many, many points. I counted at least 27 councillors who had raised, raised points. Right, we are now in...
Point of order, Chair.
Uh, point of order, yeah, go on.
Apologies, there's been no breach of procedure, but it's my only way of sort of, sort of calling out to you really, but I think perhaps a bit more information is needed regarding the recommendations. So I'm calling 41.8, Provision of Advice and Information to Members. And in point 2.1 of the RLDP Submission Council Report and its recommendations, I think councillors may find it useful if we had clarification of points A and B, and what is actually meant by changes, ideally citing a typical example for each. For instance, in point A, it mentions about making any minor changes prior to this going off to Welsh Government. And point B, which is probably quite relevant to what councillor Taylor was mentioning early on about Vinegar Hill, about making any changes to the RLDP on behalf of the council as requested by the inspector during the examination.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not convinced that's not an extension to the, to, to the debate, to be honest.
So should we vote on this today then, without even...
You vote, you vote, you vote...
Or the recommendations?
You vote on the wording in, in the recommendation, yeah, however you wish to interpret that. Thank you. So we move to vote on the recommendation, which in summary is, is to approve the RLDP and the consultation report, and to forward it to the inspectorate, to delegate authority to the cabinet member and relevant officers to make minor changes. Yeah, I, I do understand that that could be a movable feast, but there we go. And then also that changes recommended by the inspectorate will be implemented, but that also will be subject to planning, of course, which would have presumably dealt with that Vinegar Hill issue. But that also will be subject to planning, of course, which would have probably dealt with that Vinegar Hill issue. Okay, right, so we're going straight to a recorded vote, yes? Right, fire away, please.
Okay, councillor Bond.
For approval.
Councillor Brocklesby.
For.
Councillor Bromfield.
Against.
Councillor Brown.
Against.
Councillor Bryn.
Against.
Councillor Buckler.
Against.
Councillor Birch.
For.
Councillor Butler.
Against.
Councillor Callard.
For.
Councillor Chandler.
For.
Councillor Crook.
For.
Councillor Davies.
Against.
Councillor Dimmock.
Against.
Councillor Eason.
Two points, oh sorry, yes, I was watching Eurovision, for.
For, okay, thanks.
Four, yeah, I thought it was Eurovision to my mind.
Councillor Edwards.
Against.
Councillor Newell.
Against.
Councillor Garrett.
For.
Councillor Garrick.
Four.
Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Groker.
For.
Councillor Howarth.
Against.
Councillor Howells.
For.
Councillor John.
Against.
Councillor David Jones.
Against.
Councillor Penny Jones.
Against.
Councillor Keir.
Against.
Councillor Lane, I'm not sure if he's here anymore, no. Councillor Lucas.
Against.
Councillor Mayby.
For.
Councillor McConnell.
For.
Councillor McKenna.
Against.
Councillor Murphy.
Against.
Councillor Neil.
Against.
Councillor Pavia.
Against.
Councillor Powell.
Against.
Councillor Riley.
For.
Councillor Rook.
For.
Councillor Sandals.
For.
Councillor Jackie Strong.
For.
Councillor Peter Strong.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
Against.
Councillor Tudor Thomas.
For.
Councillor Watts.
For.
Councillor Webb. Councillor Wright.
Oh.
Thank you.
Right. The result of the recorded ballot is in favour of the recommendation 22, against the recommendation 22. Now, under the terms of our constitution, I have the right to issue a casting vote. I will exercise that right and I will vote in favour. Thank you. Right, well, thank you, everybody. It's been, yeah, just save it for later, the pubs will be open. Thank you, everybody. It's been a long process, and there is more of this process to go, and it will require us to work together in order to get the best resorts for all our citizens. I thank everybody. It has been almost entirely a respectful and sensible debate. Right, I will just again abuse my position as Chair and say, if you're down in the south of the county this weekend or beyond, only one place to go, and that is the new community cafe and shop, which opened in Roggett yesterday after 10 years of brilliant work by local residents, highly symbolic of the sort of thing that's happening all around our county, with our wonderful residents working hard to make life better. You're getting everything from a bacon roll to a vegan cheese salad there. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, the 4th of December. Be safe, everybody. Take great care.
Chair, before we close, I hope people will join me, and can we wish councillor Garrick a very happy birthday? What a way to spend a birthday.
I was going to announce, yeah, I was going to announce that, but I thought it might be a breach of GDPR or something.
Thank you all, everybody. You've all been absolutely wonderful. I wouldn't have spent my birthday-